We are in. Call the meeting to order for Wycomica County Council Legislative Session 2024-26 from November 19, 2024. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and pledge allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertaining motion of council to approve the consent agenda.
To move.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Consent agenda passes. Good morning, Ms. Hurley. How are you?
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We have several public hearings on the agenda this morning. Each public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the local newspaper. The first public hearing is on Resolution Number 148-2024. This is to approve the relocation of a forest conservation easement contained in 2.87 acres located on Tax Map 12, Parcel 1, owned by Heron Ponds Expansion LLC, onsite to the same parcel. The forest conservation would be relocated on the same parcel of land at a one-to-one ratio. The property owner is seeking to relocate the forest conservation easement to create buildable space for future lot development within the Heron Ponds subdivision. And Mr. Colin Harrison here, or Mr. Colin Harrison is here, if you have any questions.
Okay, at this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 148-2024. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, state your name, your residence, and your county, and your concerns. Thank you. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 148-2024. Entertaining motion of council to approve Resolution 148-2024.
To move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 149-2024. This is a capital budget amendment for engineering services for dredging Nanicoke Harbor and authorizing the county executive to execute a waterway improvement fund grant agreement for additional funding in the amount of $1,600. The county received a $50,000 waterway improvement grant in fiscal year 23 for engineering services for a planned dredging project at the Nanicoke Harbor. A $5,600 change order was needed for additional geotechnical investigations, which exceeded the original grant by $1,600. The state had agreed to fully fund the additional costs by increasing the grant award. This request is to approve a capital budget amendment to accept the additional grant funds from the state of Maryland.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 149-2024. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Good morning. My name is Joe White. I'm resident of Wycomica County. I'm in favor of spending this $1,600, and I wanted to explain to you why. And I think that the bigger discussion is, like, the capital improvement plan. We had a meeting last week, and one of the topics that's come up, and I spoke about it there, was about a fully encompassing plan. I can say, I've been at the Parks and Rec meetings for the last year-plus. They have a plan. And the reason why I bring it up is, I actually think, when Director Miller is ready to share it, I think that everyone here should look at this plan. I think this is a great example of how a plan should be written, and I think this is how we should have a capital improvement plan. If you look in their strategic plan, which is a five-year plan, it has a SWOT analysis, it has mission vision and values. These are all very important things, things I've used in my own business life to a great deal of success. But this project is in there. So yes, it's $1,600 over, but we can actually see where this project sits, and if we need to actually take something else out to afford this $1,600, I think that Director Miller and his team could actually come up with exactly where that would come from. So if you look at their strategic plan, this is an important part for the Nanicoke Harbor, and also Cedar Hill. That's part of their whole plan. But this is so we can continue to use these facilities.
Any other comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution 149-2024. Entertaining a motion of council to approve Resolution 149-2024. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 150-2024. This is to amend the fiscal year 2025 capital budget to authorize the county executive to request additional funding in the amount of $2,750,000 for the Department of Recreation, Parks and Tourism Civic Center exterior project. The Civic Center exterior project is primarily funded by a $5.52 million EDA grant that was awarded in 2022, with the additional state grants and county funds. The total project was approximately $6.9 million. The lowest bid received, however, was $9.59 million, which means additional funds are required in order to proceed with the project. The request is to increase the Civic Center exterior project funding by the $2,750,000, and to transfer funds from fund balance as shown in the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 150-2024. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Hi, Joe White again for Wycomica County. So I feel a little bit different about this project than the last one. I've seen the renderings, and I think that getting the Civic Center renovated in the way that it's been proposed would be hopeful for the county. My concern is with the way our state is acting. We found word yesterday that the state is now saying that we possibly don't have the money to fund Fruitland Primary. We're also spending $28 million this year through the Maryland Stadium Authority for renovations at Arthur Dove and Purdue Stadium. I think we need to be able to ask our delegation, we need to be able to ask our governor, and anyone who associates themselves with this group, whether or not they're going to pull their funding. This is a major concern, because I bet if we spent 26 of the $28 million on Purdue Stadium, it really wouldn't mean a lot. If it needs to be 28 million, let's do that. I also question some of the numbers that they throw out. They seem awful high for doing some of this stuff, but I think we need to hear from them. I'm not saying don't do the Civic Center, but I don't know where we're going to continue to come up with. $2.5 million here, $20 million there. I want to know as a taxpayer, who's going to be accountable to us?
White, any other public comments? That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 150-2024. Entertaining motion of council to approve Resolution 150-2024. Motion second.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Mr. Miller, if you... I see you back there.
Yes.
How are you? Good morning.
Good morning.
If everybody could introduce themselves, starting with my left to the right, for the record.
Steve Miller, I'm the director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism for the county.
Katie Rouse, I'm deputy director for Recreation, Parks, and Tourism for the county.
Craig Williams, architect for Becker Morgan Group.
Glad you're all here. Steve, you want to make any comments, or Katie, you want to make your comments?
Yeah, I will. Thank you for the time. So this project started several years ago. Ms. Hurley's passing out renderings, which I believe you saw a couple of years back when we initially started this project. As was mentioned, the funding for this project primarily comes from a federal grant through the EDA. We also got some state funding and using Civic Center restoration funding for the project. So it was about $6.9 million what we had in hand. As was noted, the bid came in quite a bit higher than that. What we have tried to do, we did go to the state, or we went to the EDA first to see if there was additional funding. Unfortunately, there was not. We also knocked on every door we could at the state level to try to close this funding gap, and we were not successful there either. So what we've tried to do is to propose a way to push this project forward. We feel like this is a very important project, both for the physical safety, it's a public safety project, but also to advance the Civic Center forward. So we've tried to lessen the blow as much as possible. I realize it is a lot of money, but we're proposing to take $500,000 out of our tourism reserve fund, $250,000 out of the Civic Center restoration, and then we're asking for the additional funding to complete the project. So we do feel, again, this, you know, I give the council credit and the executive credit for doing a lot to repair old, broken things at the Civic Center with the roof and the escalator and the things that we've done. But this project here really advances the ball forward and pushes the Civic Center forward to make it a more attractive asset for the community, something people can be proud of. But primarily, this is a public safety project. I'd be happy to expound on that. Mr. Craig Williams is here from Becker Morgan. He can certainly touch on aspects of the project. He's been part of it since the beginning, so.
Thank you.
When it came in at over budget, was there any attempt to scale back the design to try to get it back to within the budget?
So unfortunately, we, our hands were a little bit tied because of the federal funding. So normally, we could value engineer and negotiate, but the federal funding would not allow for that. So with the federal funding source, they give you an allowance of $250,000 to negotiate. And if you go beyond that, so if you're trying to scale it back to $2 million, they said you had to rebid the project. So that would be the alternative, is to essentially not gut the project, but to scale it back significantly, rebid, which now you're talking another eight to 12 weeks to bid, and it becomes a different project at that point. So that would have been an avenue we pursued. The EDA told us that we either had to come up with the additional funding or rebid the thing, scale it back.
Eight to 12 weeks to rebid and redo it would be a lot shorter time than it would be able to make up $2 million, I think. So as far as I'm concerned. I mean, it's a great-looking project, but, you know, it's a big difference than your $1,600 ask a few minutes ago.
That one, we were...
For a $2 million, $2 million, well, $2.5 million, really, $2.7 million overrun on this.
Yes, Josh.
So I guess, Craig, maybe I'll go to you, and to Steve, I guess, the bigger questions here, I guess, how much of this, of the improvement, which, by the way, I love seeing the drawings look fantastic. These look incredible. This is exactly what I want the Civic Center to look like. But of course, how much of this is aesthetic versus functional? Is this, is the, these bump outs, I'm assuming that that'll give us new areas for programming or for new revenue? Are we now going to host conferences and/or other kind of things that we haven't been able to do in the past?
Yeah, so that's actually a very good question. When you first look at this, it does look like there's a lot of expensive materials. But we did approach this initially to understand, hey, it's a civic center. We know what type of abuse that building gets. There's a certain level of quality of materials that have to go in that type of building. The other spectrum of residential, everything is just, costs more when you put it into, really, an industrial building like this. If you look at, you notice we have curtain wall, which is the glass, you know, those don't get too fancy. It's floor-to-ceiling. One person comes in to install it, it's about the cheapest way you can get windows put in. A lot of exposed structure thrown paint on it. Where a lot of this cost is coming from is, any addition that you put on a building that hasn't had its exterior touched since 1980, just costs more money. You know, we have, it's brick, not the easiest structure to build on. Plus, we're doing extreme site improvements for the safety. That's including, you know, we didn't want to surround this building with a bunch of bollards. It's not really going to help what we're trying to do here. So we mix it up with some berms, some planter boxes, things that make it more like a park experience. So we're actually looking at this exterior being more of a destination, not just somewhere to get through. I mean, it's adjacent to the park. There's no reason why this couldn't be a connector to a lot of other areas in the town. Hopefully, we see something happening across the street, residential or mixed use at some point, and this is going to be a very important part of that addition at that time. Interior, yes. We are a new café space. We see that as being, could be rented out separately. VIP for any event that's going on inside the Civic Center. Exterior box office, they no longer have to have a door open for staff to be inside the building. You can actually purchase tickets outside. Queuing's going to be a lot easier, since all of that's happening outside the building, easier for security for their part as well. Drop-off on the Flanders side, that's the side that faces Glen Avenue, that's a major improvement. We're actually, a minor amount of work we're doing there. We're exterior canopy, so we can now look at events, events going outside. Ever since COVID, that's a really popular thing. We're trying to do a lot more, is use it as exterior space, where before that was usually kind of not, kind of frowned upon. Now it's definitely spaces that a lot of people are seeing as an advantage. So outdoor fenced-in area, seating, sound system, all of that, plus major improvements to the concessions inside. And that's, again, I can't vouch, but I don't think that's been touched since 1980 as well. And, you know, the catering kitchen was updated several years ago, a great amenity improvement. This is really extending that to be the more of the counter-service to really, you know, while they increase their market and have more people in there, they'll be able to actually serve those people a lot easier. Beyond that, new parking lot improvements, better lighting throughout, so there's going to be, you know, benches, seating. We tried to preserve the veterans' area. And just kind of point out, usually when we see a value engineering effort, the first easy solution is reduce square footage. That's usually an easier number to achieve. We were already at the minimum here. Again, we didn't want to touch the Veterans Memorial. We're limited by the setbacks at Glen Avenue. We actually would have loved to have seen the addition be bigger, but we actually pushed this to the very minimum as far as the square footage is concerned. And again, kept it very simple, flat roof, about the cheapest roof you can build. It's what's on the rest of the building. They can maintain it. At the same time, they're actually, I believe, in the process of getting a grant to replace the existing roofing on the building. This all can be sort of tied in. Other than that, yes, great amenity space, easier service to get people in. No, you know, not the tutor on horn, but it does look pretty. But it really served a utilitarian purpose first, and all of that is what we're seeing in here as a driver for this design.
If I can add comments. So aesthetics are certainly part of it. These are beautiful renderings, but I would say that's the third of our three top priorities. So the first is public safety. So you know, Mr. Baker, you can appreciate this with your background. This is obviously our largest public gathering space for elections. We do graduation shows, concerts, governor's challenge, you name it. And right now, there are no physical barriers that would prevent a vehicle or something to come into large crowds of people. So primarily, as Craig outlined, there is a physical barrier now around this facility that's going to make it a more physically, or a safer venue to attend an event. So that's objective number one. Number two, as Craig noted, there, it's going to advance our ability to sell this space. So you've got new spaces, you've got a new dining space, the lobby now will be expanded. You've got these outdoor courtyard spaces that will be pre-function spaces. So it now enhances our ability to sell rather than just stay status quo. We're pushing the ball forward and sales. And then third, obviously, aesthetics is a part of it. This is beautiful. We love the Civic Center. I think the Civic Center is a great venue. But from the outside, in reality, it's a square, brown, brick, kind of institutional-looking building. And this will give it a facelift, which I think will be something that the residents are going to be proud of, and also will be an attractive asset to sell when we try to recruit other events here from outside the area. So those were the three main objectives when we applied for the federal grant and the state grants, but safety was at the top of that list.
So you're guaranteed the federal money, federal funding, right?
We've received that, yes, sir.
Oh, you've received it, okay. When do you need to know, do you need to know and answer right now if we're going to go ahead with this?
So there are two deadlines of note. That is the reason why we were trying to get it on this agenda, and I appreciate you putting us on here, Mr. Cannon. One is December 10. We have to either award or reject the bids. There's a certain amount of time. When we open the bids, I believe it was October the 11th, we have 60 days from that period to either award or not. So if we don't make an award, then we're going to have to rebid the project. So that's the first deadline. So I guess there's one other council meeting prior to that. But we have to make a decision by December 10 to award. The second deadline is the completion of the project. The current deadline to complete this is November 17 of next year, so we've got about a year from now, actually, a little less now. There's a possibility we could get that extended, but currently, that, we have a year to get this thing done. So those are the two deadlines we're kind of looking at. So obviously, we want to move this as quickly as we can, but I understand this is a big decision here.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just asking, because it's, you know, I totally understand why we need to do this. I would like to maybe sit down and look at it more with you, one-on-one, if that's possible. But that's just me speaking by myself. But however the vote goes today, if we table it for maybe next meeting, maybe there'll be some time for us to, one-on-one, go see exactly what you have. And I've seen it during our meetings. It's just, it's a big pill to swallow when you see what's happening with the state, and who knows what's going to happen with the federal government. So I don't want to lose out on federal funding because we may not get it next year.
Steve, I have a question. Thanks for being here, buddy. I really appreciate it. And I sense also the fact that because it's $2 million, you know, it's, there seems to be, in the last year, last year and a half, we've been adding so much, so many more costs and taking so much more money out of, from the county coffers to compensate for one shortfall or another. And it's becoming quite a lot, it's becoming quite frequent. It's almost as if the budget in July doesn't really make much difference, because we're going to be amending it by $2 million or $3 million, you know, within six months, easily. And I think this is part of what falls into that. But it doesn't, it doesn't take away from the fact that we certainly recognize your professional opinion in this, in this matter, and the importance of this project. So I wanted to state that, first of all. I think, you know, you're very responsible, very meticulous, Steve, in how you address issues and what you bring before this council and the executive's office. My question is, is that the, I'm assuming that this prior funding that's always been mentioned in the past, in the fiscal '24 budget of the, over $7 million, $7,770,000, which is always mentioned, is that part of the EDA grant of $5 million from '22?
Yes.
It is?
It includes that EDA money.
Right.
So that $7 million number that's been thrown around is the combination of the EDA, and then we talked about the Civic Center restoration, which is the ticketing fees that come in, the amount that we charge on that, that's designated, and partial hotel tax designated to make improvements to bring the Civic Center, do these kind of things for the Civic Center to make it a more desirable asset, and then some of the tourism fund balance as well.
We have some state grants.
And some state, yeah, we have some state grants as well in that. So the 5.9 is in that number, yes.
Okay. And forgive me if I'm missing something over the last couple of years, because that's easy for me to do. But my question would be, with the EDA grant being awarded in '22, why wouldn't this have been something that would have come forward with us just in this last year's budgetary session, others, when we approved, I think, $500,000 for this project? Why wasn't it $2,500,000? Why wasn't the bidding done earlier? Maybe it wasn't possible? Or, because the bidding seemed to kick off this sudden request for major increases.
Yeah. So we started, and I can defer to Craig on this, we started the, when we applied for the funds, we had the concepts of what you're looking at here, a narrative that went along with that. So when we secured the funds in 2022, we began with Becker Morgan doing the actual design of the facility. So that took a certain amount of time. And then, as we worked through that process, and we were working through permitting process, it took a little bit longer to get to the bid portion than I think we would have liked. But we didn't know the number. Like, we would have obviously made the request sooner or part of the budget process if we knew the number, but that bid was not completed till October. So I don't know if you want to chime in on that process, but we've been working the last two years to get to this point. I wish we were here, you know, earlier than what we are, but we worked as hard as we could to get to this point. And my fear in the delay, and again, I can appreciate, I would not want to be sitting where you're sitting with all the decisions, and I can appreciate that. My fear in delay is, A, we're going to end up with a partial project, which I think falls short of what we want to do. But B is, if we wait or we scale this thing back to go back and redo it, I don't think it will be cheaper. It will be significantly more expensive to go back and to redo and to remobilize and to do all those things. So Craig, I'll defer to you on that as far as the process goes, but...
Yeah, well, I guess what Steve was mentioning, we looked at options of, kind of considering like a phased construction, if there were areas that we could just do later. There's a couple of easy ones out there, but as Steve mentioned, that would actually cost more to remobilize and come out and do that work later. Some of that is at the Flanders side, some of that is the parking lot improvements. Once you start going beyond that, you're really digging into the meat. And it's very difficult for us to, we're kind of in a bind here, because we can't really get a contractor on board to ask them where all the cost overruns are without committing to them. And if we save over $200,000 or quarter of a million, then they're not guaranteed to get the work when we rebid. So we can, we would have to go back and take some sort of creative guesses on where the cost overruns are. And there's a very good chance that when we rebid, it's still, like Steve said, comes in more. We've seen that happen, especially since we're not really reducing square footage.
Is the cost of the marquee that we had, that was priorly separate, a separate item, is that now wrapped up in this whole project here, or is that going to be an additional cost later?
The marquee is not included in this part.
Okay.
In this project. Yeah, that's already done.
I'm assuming too, and when I read this, I was thinking, well, if the grant was awarded in '22, we're two years later here, we're fiscal year '22. I'm looking at that, I guess it's a three-year span, maybe, but depending on the calendar year. But we're seeing this with education as well. You delay a project two years, and all of a sudden, you're in the multimillion. Plus, since '22, everything's been escalating endlessly, and we do recognize that as well.
We built in a five-year, or a one-year escalation of 5%. So we were anticipating a 2023 construction start. So we are one year behind that escalation that was built in. So not a huge amount, but still, there was, there's a gap there.
Any other questions, Jeff?
Where are we at on the roof?
We are currently finalizing the bid documents. So that, again, has been a little bit of a process. But the nice thing with the timing, if we're able to proceed here, those projects would happen simultaneously, so there would be a level of mobilization, coordination between a roofing contractor, because you are going to touch parts of the roof here. And so we'd be able to coordinate that, and really try to disrupt the building, because it's going to be a major disruption to the building. The show still goes on. Like, we don't, we don't, we're going to do construction. We don't stop and shut the building down for a year. So we're going to have to get creative with that. And ideally, if we can do the roof in this project at the same time, we got one year of disruption where we reroute people and all that. But to do that once and not drag that thing out over multiple years would be helpful as well.
What's the possibility of the $4 million being escalated once they get into it?
For the roof?
Yes.
I think it's a possibility, but I do think that the timing on the roof has been much more compact than this timing was. So I'm hopeful that it would not be the case. And, I mean, this stuff's hard. It's hard for me to sit here and, you know, you talk about budgeting and all that, and we do our best with the numbers, but this is the reality of what's happening. And when I sit here from a financial standpoint and think about it, Craig's great, but he costs money. He's not sitting here for free. And if we have to go back and rebid, that's going to cost money to get new bid documents done. It's going to take time. So it's a bit of a balancing act with that. But with the roof, I'm hopeful that because we were able to get that done in a more compact timeframe, as far as when we got a budget estimate on that, and that's a little bit more straightforward than this kind of project. It's a roof. These people have dealt with that roof for a long time. So I'm much more hopeful on that. I'm not going to sit here and promise you that, but that's my thinking.
They're good, but they don't have a crystal ball.
Nobody does.
Right. Josh?
See, obviously, I don't want to lose, you know, $5.5 million of federal money. I can't imagine that the federal government or the state government is going to have much money in the future. So it's better to strike while we can, when there is that. I guess, and just getting back to that other question there, as far as, like, if you could do a phasing of it, if we could approve, move forward, you know, I mean, some of these, I see looking at the exterior parts, you know, maybe there's ADA accessibility, those kind of things you can do in Phase 2, where we could probably get a bond bill or something like that, minimal amount from the state. Or, I say minimal, I mean, you know, significant, but not... but not, not $1 million, but maybe a half million or something like this. And maybe you can move in with the, you know, there's the, I'm sure you all looked at the Prosperity Investment Fund, you know, there's, there's infrastructure or other monies there that could, that are usually underutilized for the Royal Maryland Council. So like, I don't know if there's something like that that we could do as a Phase 2 where you could put that Phase 2 more as a safety component. But I don't want to lose this money, and this is certainly, I don't, it's sad that, pardon me, it's, I appreciate the fact that you are addressing it now, the fact that the exterior hasn't been addressed since, before I was born, and I'm in my 40s now. So that, and also, I say, I really, I really appreciate the design, and if folks can't see there, but I was wondering in the past, I was like, when I first looked at these before, I was like, well, why do we need this giant barrier, which says Wycomico Civic Center in the front, or, you know, why this, pardon me, I was seeing this concrete blocks. But now, when I see it in the terms of, oh, this is all about safety for protecting people who are there so that nobody rams into them with a car, the reality is that we have to think about more often. That makes a whole lot more sense. So I guess if it, I, one way or another, we need to be moving forward with this project. I guess the question is if there's a creative finance way to do that, I don't know. And then I'm still, I'm looking at Pam, Pam, I'm not going to look at you to answer this, but I still don't really know right now. At my mind, I don't have an understanding of where we are as far as our reserve fund balance. I guess with this request, we're looking at $2 million and then to move from internal money.
2.7.
The $500,000 for tourism revenue and then $250,000 from internally. So realistically, it's $2 million that we're looking for from our reserve fund balance. So how much of that do we have? And how much, I don't really know how much leeway we have in that.
Pam, could you come up here?
Thank you, Ms. Olens.
This is a pretty big financial decision. I think the financial director should be sitting up here.
And by the way, I just want to reiterate, of course, it'd be different if we were having this conversation two years ago, you know, when Governor Hogan was just throwing out money to anyone and everyone, $10 million to the regional councils. By the way, regional council might be another space. But we are in a very different spot. We are probably going to lose our disparity grant, if not see a cut in half in the year ahead. So, and that's many millions of dollars. So we certainly have to be prudent. Thank you.
I agree. Real quick, with, go ahead.
Joe, if you had a comment?
I'll save it till Mrs. Olens is done.
I agree with what Josh is saying as far as getting Fed money, state money, anytime we can. But we need to start worrying about our monies here. You know, I feel like we have spent and spent and spent, and we're, we're continuing to spend. The state's warning us, our Eastern Shore delegation has sat where you guys are sitting and warned us, the feds are talking about cuts, and we need to be real careful with just throwing out these, hey, another $2 million, $3 million, $4 million. You know, we have a revenue cap that we got to deal with, whether you're for it, whether you're against it. And I just, we just need to be careful.
These are things that I was saying when we approved $10 million for a school last year. And it would have been $20 million if it wasn't for Pam. But we are in the situation now because we spent a lot of money last year.
Probably in the reserves, Pam.
So we are still in the midst of doing our 2024 audit. So based on, and our budget, we were expected, after all of the budget amendments that we did in 2024, we were expected to spend, I believe, around $20 million of fund balance. We will not be using $20 million of fund balance in 2024. The biggest single item that is going to help us with that is the fact that, oh, by the way, Pamela, our finance director. The biggest single factor of that is our income tax came in significantly higher than what we budgeted. I was expecting in, income tax to come in around $70, $71 million. It ended up coming in at $77 million. And all of that additional that we were not expecting came in in the month of August. So again, 2024 is going to close out significantly better than what we expected. When we went to New York in September to meet with the rating agencies, I told them I was estimating between $5 and $10 million worth of usage versus the $20 million that we had budgeted. So again, that's a significant savings that we were not, so last year, we ended the fiscal year with $74 million of unencumbered fund balance, if I'm remembering correctly. I did not bring my audit with me, so I'm trying to remember that number off the top of my head. We estimated that we were going to spend $20 million of that, and I don't expect us to be anywhere close to that number. Josh, your comment in regards to creative staging is all well and good, but because the contract was not written in that way, we would literally have to still rebid. So it's, it's kind of a decision today, it's all or nothing. We can, if I remember correctly, if I remember our discussions correctly, it's a, it's a decision of, yes, we want to put this money in, in the project that we currently have in front of us, or we have to go back and take a look at what we can change to try to reduce that number. That will require additional bid specs, sending the bids out, rebidding, and it will require time that will eat into the deadline of us getting this done. Again, could we ask for an extension? Yes. Will we get it? I can't answer that question. But it, it really is a decision today. Counsel, do we want to put $2,750,000 in, $2 million from the general fund and $750,000 from the funds that have, have had savings? And again, the Restoration Fund is purposefully created by previous councils to allow for this type of thing. The Tourism Fund has a healthy fund balance, and if tourism can't help support what goes on in that building, you know, we try to bring tourists in for that building. So again, it's, it's a perfect use of their fund balance. Unfortunately, they don't have enough to cover the $2 million, and that's why we're asking for the general fund. So kind of the decision is, is do we go with the plan as is and do this money today? Or are you asking Rec Parks and Tourism and Administration to go back and re-engineer? And what can we reduce to lower that number? It's still no guarantee that we will be able to get it down to the total amount that we currently have. We still could be coming back to counsel because there could be things that we, we just can't cut out at this stage.
Yeah, I believe missing the December 10th deadline is going to cost us much more than $2 million. I believe you said that during the Fruitland, when we were discussing the Fruitland Primary School, that you said the $10 million that we would be taking out of reserves would take us down to about 42, 42 million in reserves.
And that was at the point in time when we were doing the budget and before I, again...
So now we have $7 million more than that. So we're probably in the range of 40, 49, 50.
Again, I was expecting us to spend, and the $10 million that I, or the, yes. So again, we made $7 million more just in one line item than what I was estimating, and that number is still not even what we budgeted. We budgeted like 63 and a half, 64 and a half, and we made 77.
Yeah.
So again, I was expecting it to come in closer to 70. It came in at 77.
I agree with what Shane says. I mean, this isn't the only project we have outstanding right now that's in the multimillions that's going to also, that we're going to be asked to approve in the next, within the next month alone. But again, I just don't see where any delays on this part is going to help us. I think it's only going to hurt. Joe, give me.
I see, I see the problem here is when you came in over budget to begin with, that you didn't go back and try to cut, cut back then instead of wait until now to come to the council. I mean, you were approved for $6,900,000, correct? And it came in at $9,594,000. At some point in time, when you were doing this design, you should have said, wait a minute, we've only got $6,900,000. That's our, that's our, where we need to be. And I've been here a long time, and I asked Laura this morning in the office, I said, how many times have we been at the council meeting when we've approved projects and they come back and they've been over budget, they've gone over budget and we've had to do transfers? You know, this isn't, nothing new. The newest thing about this is this is one of the bigger ones. But the other point is, you know, the Sheriff's Department, when they first got ready to build that, that came back and they did a redesign on that. They cut the money down on that. So I'm looking at the, I'm looking at this design and I'm thinking, you know, it's beautiful. Okay, we love our Civic Center, you know, our community loves our Civic Center, but work within your means.
So we didn't find out until October 11th that we were at $9 million.
Well, in October 11th, they should have said, well, we've gone over $2,750,000. Let's go back. Let's go back and straighten this out. You know, I mean...
Mr. Williams said, though, that the only way they could do that would be to try to find out why the costs were as high as they were, and they couldn't do it without violating the bidding process or committing to an individual developer. Jeff?
To be pushed up against a wall like this, you know, it's unbelievable.
Can I have?
Yes, go ahead, Steve. No, Steve, go ahead first if you want.
Well, I was just, I can appreciate, appreciate what you're saying. I think one of the, the main effort that we made from October 11th, obviously, on October 11th, the hope was that it would come within 6.9 million. That was our hope. And when it came in over, obviously, we were disappointed with what the result was. We didn't know what that was going to be. What we did from October 11th for about a month was I knocked on every door I could knock on to try to figure out, can, can I find other funding? So I went to the EDA, went to Stadium Authority, went to the state, went to our delegates. So we've been trying to solve this problem without having to take this step.
Steve, Steve, excuse me. You tried to find other funding and that, you know, that's great, but did you try to cut the cost down to where it was at before?
It would have to be rebid. It literally would have to be...
Rebid it. I mean, you know.
Well, that's, yeah, that's the decision. So, but, but the intent initially was from October 11th to recently, until we made this request, was to try to see if we could close the gap. If, if we can't, then that is where we land, is we have to scale it back and start over.
Some of the, some of the... Jeff?
Jeff? I think this is a Pam question. Could we close the gap by using money in unfilled positions? I, I mean, we're less than six months into the fiscal year. Is there any wiggle in there?
So ultimately, the savings in that does go back into fund balance. That's another piece of what will happen in the 20, when we're finishing out the '24 audit. And so the '24 audit's fund balance, I'm just count, the numbers that I just laid out to you are just on the revenue side. We did have savings in, on the expense side. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. Again, that's the reason why I told Wall Street in September that I thought the number of usage was between 5 and 10. That still could be conservative. We could still be lower than that, but I readily admit, I'm a conservative accountant and I sit here as your conservative accountant and try to utilize the funds as best, as possible for the county using the funds that we have. And so that is the estimate that I currently have. We are in the midst of finishing the audit, and I will, when we are making the decisions about fiscal '26, we will have those numbers in front of counsel. I expect to not utilize the funds that counsel approved for '24 and to the fullest ability that we had said we're going to. So there will be money in the fund balance more than what was expected.
Shane, you have a question?
So some of this is confusing, but I'm trying to make it as simple in my head as I can. If I go to a builder and say, I want to build a home, I have $500,000 to work with, builder says, okay, here's the plans, here's what I can do. We get into that home and it, the price starts increasing, or I increase it, and it becomes a $700,000 home or 750. And I look at the builder and I'm like, oh, don't worry about it. I'll go to the bank and I'll figure it out and we'll get the money. It, it just seems like to me, a lot of this was put too far ahead without making sure you had the money to do it. And maybe I'm just confused, but it, it just seems like the cart has been put before the horse.
Well, you have to have a significant, you have to have a sufficient set of plans to be able to send out a request for bid. So those plans had estimates in it as to how much it was going to cost. Since that time, when we created the plans, and the plans have been in, in the works since 2022, costs have escalated. The state now has a $15 minimum wage that it didn't have when this was started. So the plans were created with the concept that we, we believed that there was sufficient amount of money. The bids came in higher than that. So ultimately, the decision today by counsel is, do you approve the use of these funds? Or are you requesting that we go back and amend the plans and rebid? Those are the, those are the two choices that are on the table today.
I'm going to request that we stay within our means. That's what I'm going to request.
Well, keep in mind, two of these six bids were over $11 million. But again, I think the one difference between your house, I may be mistaken, Shane, but there's a grant of $5.5 million out here that we're getting ready to lose. I don't think you're, you know...
But we have to worry about our coffin of money as well.
I understand.
It doesn't matter how much another state or federal entity is going to give you money. If you're depleting your own money to a point that it may be troubling.
Sure. Josh, can you just wrap this up?
The, just, I mean, for clarity and just for context here, if we were spending $2 million out of our reserve fund balance to increase ditches here in Wycomico County just to, to dig out our ditches, how much revenue would that bring in from outside the county?
Most likely, very little.
Yep. So if we were spending $2 million then to go to, to fix up a place where people come and intentionally drop their money, the point of a civic center obviously is, it's not just to hold the, the population of Wycomico County or the people who come out from Salisbury. This is a space to, we can grab a bunch of people from across the region, they can take their money that's sitting in their little coin jars and they can dump it in Wycomico County. So I guess the bigger question of is, you know, in my mind, if I were looking at this from an ROI standpoint, what is, you know, I don't really know what our return on investment is, but I got to think that that's, you know, if this gives us more space to do more functions, to have more meetings, you know, or to have, in this case, looking so much safer and better that we can actually get a, you know, you know, better quality performances and things like that, then I think then it makes sense. So I don't know if you all have an internal ROI document. I don't, I know you've got enough things going on. You probably don't have anything like that. But, but regardless, I do want to make sure that we're looking at this, not as this is, you know, this is, the reason why the state and others give money to this, the reason why there's grants, is that this helps Wycomico County bring more dollars in to our area. And that's what is important, that's jobs, so.
If I, if I may, but...
Yeah, go ahead.
So I've been with Wycomico County now for 11 years. As you know, most of you know, I started in Rec Parks and Tourism. This project was started back when I first arrived. I saw renderings that were similar to these, but there was no federal grant on the table at that point in time. It was all county funding that was intended. Those plans stopped for two reasons. One reason was it came in over the, the budget that the county had, and I honestly can't remember what that number was. Second, we had a flood in our box office. About the time we were trying to make the decision of no-go-go, no-go, no-go, we had a President's Day weekend flood where our sprinkler system basically put 18 inches of water over 10,000 square feet of that building. So we had to revamp what we were doing with the funding that we had. We had, obviously, we had insurance money to help us with that, but there were other things that we also had to still spend on. And so the decision was no-go at that point in time. And I want to say that was in, it was the year after, or several months after Executive Culver was appointed, or elected. So we're going back in time, and we've attempted to do this project once, 100% funded by county funds. The amount that we're asking for here is less than the total amount that the county was willing to expend at that point in time. That part I'm sure of. But we are now at a point where we are making a decision as to whether or not we want to utilize federal funds to get this project to its completion eight, 10 years later.
If I can comment on Mr. Hastings' comment, that was entirely the premise of why we got the federal grant. The EDA gave us this grant, and it was because of the tourism value of this building. They saw the value, not just for the county, but for the region to have an asset like this. So that's the EDA's whole thing, is economic development, and they viewed this as an economic development project. And so that is why we got the 5.5 million. So to your point.
Shane, go ahead.
I know when you do not use the money, that grants, you like, you refuse the money or problems, you can't use the money. or problems, you can't use the money. Sometimes they won't give you any more money. You can't turn down money that you have because after a while, it happened to, I was on the city council. You don't turn down money that you have. I, I think about the 2 million, but like you said, it was 2022. And I know things go up, but the little bid, I looked at the little bid, and I think you're not going to get any more than what you have. So I'm going to agree with the 2 million right now, but I pray that it doesn't go over the, the, what you're asking for. Because we have other, other people want money and grant money and, you know, but you don't turn down money that's already been given to you, allocated for you.
And if I can comment on that too, thank you. I'll quote my friend Dave Ryan here, but when we got this grant, Dave was one of the advocates of us getting the grant. And he commented on the fact that he doesn't recall in his tenure, which is a long time here in the county, of us getting something of this size from the EDA, that this was a significant step for us that hopefully would be a springboard for other EDA-type projects, whether it's the airport or wherever. So in it, by itself, selfishly, you know, I look at this and say, hey, this is great for the civic center, but, but perhaps this could be a springboard for us to do other stuff with the EDA in the future. So that is a hope certainly as we move forward.
All right. Appreciate it, everybody. Entertained motion, we've already entertained motion. All those in favor of Resolution 152,024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Chair votes aye. Resolution 152,024 passes by a 5-2 margin. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 151-2024. This is to amend the fiscal year 2025 capital budget to reallocate unused Pago funding from the Fuel Farm Pago and Piedmont Parking Lot Pago projects to the Piedmont Rehabilitation Project and the SRE/ARF Building Construction Project at the Salisbury Ocean City Wacomico Regional Airport. Two airport projects have cost overruns. The first project is the Piedmont Roof Rehab. This project needs an additional $60,000 to a ventilation related change order not covered by CARES funds. The second project is the SRE/ARF Buildings, and delays by the FAA increase the cost by $800,000, which cannot be covered by grants. These cost overruns can be fully covered by reallocating $527,733.42 in savings from the Piedmont Parking Lot Project and $332,266.57 from the Fuel Farm Project with no additional costs or county funding. This request is to reallocate the Pago funding so the projects with the cost overruns can move forward.
Time we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 151, 2024. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference, in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county, residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 151, 2024. Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 151, 2024. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next, your consideration is Resolution Number 152-2024. This is amending the FY25 Position Control Document, which is Exhibit F, for the airport operations and maintenance technicians, position number 100673, to $48,300 for the Salisbury Ocean City Wacomico Regional Airport.
Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 152, 2024. To move? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution 152, 2024 passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item for business is Resolution Number 153-2024. This is approving a contract agreement with Venue Next powered by Shift 4 to provide point-of-sale software services for food and beverage sales at the Civic Center and the Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex on behalf of the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism for a period of five years.
Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 153, 2024. To move? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next, your consideration is Resolution Number 124-2024. This is approving the submission of nominees to the Director of the State Department of Assessments and Taxation for consideration of supervisor. This resolution was originally presented to council on September the 17th, but was postponed to November the 19th to allow council time to interview the nominees submitted. Council met with most of the nominees on October the 15th, and a letter was sent to the Director of Assessment and Taxations on October the 23rd forwarding the names of the nominees. This resolution is to properly document the names and of the nominees submitted on record.
Motion from council to approve Resolution 124, 2024.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lufman, do you have any comments?
I think Ms. Hurley covered it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor of Resolution 124, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is a submission of appointments to the Tourism and Civic Center Commission and the Board of Library Trustees.
You have the floor.
Okay, so Bunky Lufman, Director of Administration. The Tourism Civic Center, I'll repurpose for both of them and then I guess we'll do the resolutions one at a time. So the purpose for Tourism and Civic Center Commission, it serves as advisory capacity to Director of Recreation Parks and Tourism on related topics to tourism and civic center. And the library trustees sets policies and procedural guidelines for the library, and the board oversees proposed and approved budget operations.
Thank you, Ms. Lufman.
So Resolution 154, 2024 is confirming the appointment of William Dillon as a member of the Tourism and Civic Center Commission.
Motion from council to approve Resolution 154, 2024. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution Number 155-2024. This is confirming the appointment of Dr. Marie Bernadette Fouchet as a member of the Board of Library Trustees.
Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 155, 2024.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Resolution Number 156-2024 is confirming the appointment of Mr. Freddie L. Mitchell as a member of the Board of Library Trustees.
Motion from council to approve Resolution 156, 2024.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution Number 157-2024. This is confirming the appointment of Chelsea Phillips Hutton as a member of the Board of Library Trustees.
Motion to approve Resolution 157, 2024. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Lufman. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Mr. Benson, still morning.
Good morning, Mr. President. Counsel, this is legislative bill number 2024-12 being introduced here, to be introduced today. It's an act to amend Chapter 99 of the Wacomico County Code titled Vehicles County to Establish Procedures for the Use and Operation of County Under Leased Vehicles. Wacomico County currently does not have any significant rules or regulations with regard to county vehicles. The purpose of this is to establish a guideline for county vehicles. This legislation was drafted by Ms. Hurley initially using, I think, Harford County's, some of the legislation in Harford County. I would note that Harford County is a county executive form of government, the same as Wacomico County. The, after Ms. Hurley had drafted it, she sent it to me for my review. I made minor changes. After my changes, we sent this to the county attorney's office in January of this year. The county attorney indicated he would meet with the county executive. After he met with the county executive, the county attorney's office submitted a red line version of this bill back for our review. The county council, or the, Mr. Holloway, who was the primary person with regard to this, met with Ms. Hurley and myself, and we reviewed the red line changes. And largely, the vast majority of the red line changes proposed by the county attorney's office were included in this legislation. The purpose of this is to basically establish a process whereby county vehicles, the county council is the, funds the vehicles. This requires that, that the county executive, at the time the budget is submitted, provide a list of vehicles and what departments and persons those vehicles go to, so the county council understands what it's funding. It requires all vehicles to have county decals so that the public knows when someone is driving a county vehicle, knows when they're being used, and what projects are being done by county vehicles. It also provides a requirements that county employees have to meet in order to be entitled to drive vehicles. So that someone who has a bad driving record, who is not necessarily someone the county would want driving vehicles, would not be permitted to place the county's insurance carriers and, and the public at risk. So that's what this legislation is intended to do. The county, as the council knows, the county executive sent an email yesterday with regard to this. And in that email, she raised a number of questions. And just for the council's information, I'd like to just briefly go down the council, the executive's letter. The first questions have to do with Section 99-2B and 99-2D of the proposed legislation, and has to do with the, how to tell who's driving vehicles. Does the council have to be notified as to who specific people are driving vehicles? I would simply point out that under Section 99-2B, the county executive may assign department vehicles to, not assign vehicles to departments, agencies, or employees, but she's supposed to provide a list at the budget time of where those vehicles are going, so the council knows what it's funding when it, when it passes the budget. It's a once-a-year requirement, so it's only at budget time. Secondly, she raised an issue about county employees being required to provide copies of their driving records. The purpose of that is so that the county knows whether an individual who was employed by the county has a history of problems with driving and has a significant number of points. And the, the legislation establishes a, a criteria under which a county employee would not be permitted to drive county in vehicles if they have a bad driving record. She raised the issue about the county employees having to pay for that. I'm not sure that the county, that the county can't get these records without the count, the employee having to pay for them. But that's, that, secondly, it's a one-time situation. So the county, the county employee is mandated to provide a copy or has a copy of this driving record provided once. He's only, he or she is only provided to change that or, or make changes if there is a significant change in their driving record and/or, I guess, if they move from point A to point B. But it's a one-time requirement. The only time it would be changed is if county employee were to get a DWI. They're going to have to tell the county, their employer that they got a DWI, so the county can evaluate whether that person should be allowed to drive or not, drive a county vehicle. There's a section in here about 99-3C in the legislation, and that has to do with an employee whose driving record reflects more than seven driving convictions to include prepayable offenses in the last four years may not utilize a vehicle. The county executive makes a reference to speed camera tickets and not being able to hold county employees responsible for that. I would simply note that under Maryland law, a speed camera ticket is a civil penalty, is not a moving violation for the purpose of assessing points, and may not be recorded by the administration on the driving record of the owner or the driver of the vehicle. So to the extent that a, a county employee may get a, a speed camera ticket, it won't show up on their driving record and isn't going to have any impact in this. She raised a question about the state's attorney. If the state's attorney's office changes employees who drive vehicles, are they mandated to tell the county council? The state's attorney's office is a law enforcement, in my opinion, is a law enforcement division. They are not required or mandated to have the decal or county emblems on their vehicles. But at budget time, the county council would be entitled to know how many vehicles are assigned to the state's attorney's office and which individuals in the state's attorney's office are being assigned specific vehicles. But it's a once-a-year requirement. And the same thing's true for the landfill and pool cars. There's a question in here about whether this is for all vehicles or just for take-home vehicles. This is for all vehicles that are owned by the county. There's a question as to whether the county council requires, does the county council plan to determine who qualifies for a take-home vehicle? Section, again, as I said earlier, Section 99-2B says the county executive may assign vehicles. If the council's not assigning the vehicles, they just simply want to know who's been assigned a vehicle at budget time. And lastly, she again asks about things having to go before the county council. Basically, the, the information has to be provided, the county council has to be provided at the time the budget's submitted. Budget, the county council's responsible for funding the budget. The county council presumably wants to know what they're paying for, and this ensures that the council is providing the information. Lastly, the executive suggested that this might be better as part of the personnel manual. My only point with regard to that is, as I indicated earlier, this went to the county executive via the county attorney's office in January of 2024. Had the county executive thought this was more appropriate to be in the personnel manual, she's had 10 months to make a proposal to put it in the personnel manual. We haven't received a proposal to do that. So this is here today for the council to review and decide whether they want to adopt it on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. I'm sorry. Entertained motion from council to introduce legislative bill 2024-12.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Joe.
This, this first came about here, I don't know, a year or so ago. Getting calls about vehicles with local government tags with no stickers on them, and people wanted to know who were driving them. And of course, they give, you know, give you the local government tag number, and you'd have to contact the executive's office and find out who was driving that vehicle. I think the stickers, the seals on the corner, on the doors, and on the tailgate, which is in the, if there, if there's room on the tailgate, which is in this bill, is probably what causes the biggest uproar, because there is a number of vehicles running around in the county without seals on the doors. But putting seals on the doors, the county seal on the doors, stickers, you know, improve accountability. And it promotes a county. You know, you have, you see that seal on a door of a car and it's riding down the road, you think, well, okay, somebody's out doing their job. So I don't see any problems with that. The, there's a lot of things in the bill that Mr. Benson pointed out. I don't understand why they didn't get back to us sooner. I think he did a really good job of, of defining what they meant and answering the questions. And I guess he worked with the county, county executive's attorney on that. So being we don't have a law, you know, that's our job, is to make laws, and it's the county executive's job to follow them. So I think I support putting this in, being I brought it forward.
Jeff?
Thank you. In Section 99-4G regarding accidents or vandalism, I see it's got to be reported, but I don't see anything in there about drug testing the operator of the vehicle. Is that, is that in the personnel manual or? Is that, is that in the personnel manual, or?
It's not, that's not part of this legislation.
Okay. And what about the benchmark of take-home vehicles? Who gets them, who doesn't get them? That's, that's a personnel.
That's, that's not, this legislation does not define who gets the vehicles. It does say that vehicles are to be used for, under section 99-4D, it says vehicles should be used for official business only. When responding to an emergency travel, shall be directly to and from home and designated place of work. Use of vehicle, personal business prohibited. Personal business shall include but not be limited to driving to and from work, transporting members of family, transporting children to and from school, shopping, or work pleasure are for pleasure. Point being, the council is not in this bill designating who gets a work vehicle, but it is saying that if you have a work vehicle from Wycomico County, it is intended to be used for work purposes. It is not to be used for your own personal use. So to the extent, I don't know that that directly answers your question, but that's what this does.
Yeah, I was mostly asking so the public's aware that's, I believe that's most of the contacts that the council members have been getting is county vehicles maybe not be using, being used for county business.
I would say, I think overall, you know, it does feel like a lot of text. It does feel like a lot of this, this is an all-new code. It probably should be in a personnel manual for a lot of these pieces, a lot of these objects. But that being said, I think I really, I support the intent, and obviously, we want to know who's driving which county vehicles and, you know, make sure that we understand this is a clear county vehicle when it is, you know, when it's out and about. I think, I guess, the other questions in my mind, like things like 99-2E, where it says a vehicle may not be assigned to one particular employee except for a county executive, director of administration, or a person who is regularly assigned and is actually required response to an emergency, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess I'm trying to understand, what, what is this particularly for? How are we, are we, what is this trying to say? I guess I'm not quite sure. It didn't say one particular employee. I assume they don't mean naming an individual or naming a particular position, but I guess we are trying to say, in this case, there are only two positions in the county of people who can have a vehicle assigned to them regularly. I guess, in full disclosure, I have no idea how many other, and really, I could care less, honestly, but generally, I don't know how many people are county employees under the administration who are driving around vehicles that are not emergency-based or that are not directly for the director of administration or the executive. But that being said, I guess, what is this trying to get at? And are we trying to restrict who could be, who the county executive could assign to become an individual who is then required to have one? I guess I'm really unclear on what 99-2E is going after.
I think the intent is, I think the intent of that provision is that, that other than the, the executive and the director of administration, all the other vehicles, while some might be the primary user, they're not the exclusive user, and those vehicles would be available for other employees to use, basically, you know, on a pool basis. So while they may be the primary user of the vehicle on a day-to-day basis, if someone else needs to use it, it's not their exclusive vehicle. It's rather, it's supposed to be used by the county employees generally. So Joe may have the vehicle primarily, but it's not his vehicle. If somebody else needs to use it, they should be able to use it.
Okay.
A good example would be the council car vehicle that we use. I mean, I use it primarily when we go to Annapolis, but council people have also used it.
And you know we had a car?
Yes.
I guess, so the only other pieces in here that came to mind, so like, even just before that, by the way, looking at D, it's talking about if a decal falls off or it's needed to repair, the county show, you know, blah, blah, blah. Like, a lot of that really does sound a lot like, you know, personnel manual text, not something you should be going into, in my view, a legislative code. You know, this is a four pages of essentially new code, where we could realistically do this in probably one page. But either way, I guess the only other question I have here, you know, mentions things like the DUI, you know, are we going into the depth of saying, so let's say someone is, looks like they may have a DUI or DWI, sorry. Do we say then thereafter, how long before an individual can then, you know, regain their ability to, to drive a vehicle? Is that in here?
I think that would be, the executive to make that decision, wouldn't it?
I think that, I think that would be good, but once again, that probably should be signed. I mean, if we, I feel like we could probably pull these together into two pieces, the text versus the personnel manual, but yeah, maybe we need to specify that, that the county executive needs to declare. I don't know, but.
Yeah, I just, in section 99-3B, an employee has six or more points on his or her driving record and whose license to drive is suspended or revoked, may only operate a vehicle with an ignition interlock device, may not utilize a vehicle. So to the extent someone has a DWI, and they are required in their personal life to have an ignition interlock, they're not going to be allowed to use a county vehicle. I don't know that that directly answers your question, but.
I think, getting it to the point there, like, say, let's say, we're on the way home, and, you know, the director of administration is pulled over for a DUI, they would then, hey, say, hey, I've got a DWI, sorry. At that point in time, do they surrender their ability to drive around, or is they wait till there's a conviction or some other?
I, I think they, they are obligated to report it, but a, but receiving a ticket for a DWI is not a conviction, and it would not, it would not apply until they had a conviction and the points associated with it.
So I guess, do we need to be clear to say that here and there, that upon conviction that this is, or do we need to spell that out more than already is?
Well, I mean, in section 99-3C, it says a person whose driving record reflects more than seven driving convictions may not utilize a vehicle. So I think it's addressed in here.
Seven driving, that means seven points, correct?
Seven driving convictions.
I have no idea what even, how to, I only couldn't tell you what a point is or how one gets one. I know you can get one if you, you drive enough, you get enough speeding tickets, but I could not tell you how many points that equates to. But, so, I don't know if that, but.
It's kind of an industry standard.
Okay.
It is. Seven points is.
Is that within a, a time?
That's four years.
Yeah, four years. Yeah.
James? If you get seven tickets in one year, you've got a problem.
But, I mean, it's a four-year period, so, I mean, it's going to restart after, I mean, you're going to have some drop off, some drop on, so it's a four-year period of time.
I think we seriously, I mean, we're talking about voting on this law, we really need to think about adding to it, if you're in an accident with a county vehicle, you should be drug tested.
Is that required now, Mr. Early?
You can make a motion now, or, you know, just sometime before it's adopted?
I know of people who have been, have had to go in for testing.
Oh, so you're asking whether or not that's a requirement now for employees to have that drug test done? If my recollection is correct, the personnel manual says the employee may be tested. It's not necessarily a requirement, so the word's not shall, it's may.
Individual departments may have more strict, policies that are more strict, yes. James?
Is Paul, Paul, are you, can you, you're the county attorney, I'd like to ask you a question about this, if you can.
Andrew's our point guy.
Oh, Andrew, okay. Andrew's the point guy on this one. Thank you, Andrew. I think most of this is all kind of common sense, but I, I, I don't know if it should be in a personnel manual, or if this should be something that we pass. I like most of the language here. I just, I, I don't know if we're getting to the point of the council directing the county employees on what they can and can't do, because we're the council, and there's an executive form of government here, and I just, I don't want to step on any toes, and I don't know if the human resources department has looked at this. I know you have.
So first, good morning, Andrew Illuminati, Wycomico County Department of Law. So most of the recitation of the history by Mr. Benson is accurate. There was a substantial red line by the county attorney's office. There are some concerns about, there's incongruence between the personnel manual, what's in there in, as far as in what's in the legislative bill. The position is that the, only Hartford County is the only other county in the state that has this type of requirements codified within their law. So when we first looked through it, we looked at other county executive forms of government, and this is a personnel manual matter. I know that there's been a significant attempt to re-hall the personnel manual. I know that the director of that department has been before council. There's been different stages. There's parts of this which are really just, even some of it, as you were talking about the DUI versus the DWI, using specific language is problematic. That was part of the response that was from the county attorney's office, is let's try to use standard terms. People may think of DWI versus, and what does that mean, versus DUI. Those are actually legally defined terms, and so it's important that both of those, more reference to transportation article and the violation within transportation article be proper. Reworking this as part of the personnel manual, segregating mostly 98% of it, and then leaving a few parts, maybe about the budget reporting on an annual basis. Part of the problem could be, though, unfortunately, there's significant turnover, and individuals may get assigned a car, then they may leave, and then the car gets reassigned. And so the recommendation of the law department would be to just put all employees in the department as assigned to the vehicle, short of it being a specific vehicle, because there's parts of this that make it a punishment. I think one of the hardest parts is if the decal falls off, you know, enforcing that on employee to not drive the vehicle that morning. They may come out, the vehicle fell off, it was cold at night, you know, that's, there's parts of this which are problematic and could be problematic in the future. We were not, the law department was not invited to a work session on this. We'd appreciate the opportunity to comment, even if it's just in the form of a memo to all of you about possible concerns, because at the end of the day, if there's an issue involving HR and an employee says, I'm being unfairly punished because I didn't comport with the manual, or there's an allegation because, as a good example, if somebody gets, unfortunately, pulled over, it's in the paper, it's a high-ranking member, and then all of a sudden, the next day, somebody sees them driving, you know, under the criminal standard, as Mr. Benson stated, they're innocent until proven guilty, but at a lower standard, the county may have a legitimate interest in removing that prerogative to operate the motor, a county motor vehicle. Just because they're presumed innocent doesn't mean that they shouldn't, should be operating a vehicle. And so if there was a work session in the future to discuss, or even a memo from the department to say what some possible concerns are, be open to responding.
Would this be a good idea to have HR up here? Or should we see if HR has this already in the works for the personnel manual?
They've been doing this since January, James.
I know, but nothing's been brought to us.
Exactly.
And I just don't know where they are in the personnel manual.
I guess, to the extent that nothing has been brought, it was, through the discussions, it sort of reached an impasse. Working with Mr. Benson, there wasn't any representation of, well, if you want, through personnel manual, submit a personnel manual request. I know there have been ongoing discussions to make it part of the personnel manual. I can't speak to as why it wasn't submitted.
Well, I have an idea. It's probably because for the past almost a year, we've been having a battle, it seems like, and why would we bring something to the table for this, for the county executive form of government when it seemed like everything was getting nitpicked? So I, I can see why that was held back. Now that we're past this election, maybe that we can put the personnel manual back on the table and we can get things done.
That's a decision for council. I have a question, if I could. It's talking about a decal affixed to the rear. Did I miss something else in here where there was no requirement for it to be affixed to front doors?
Must be compliant with paragraph C, all vehicles excluding so-and-so shall have license placed to clear designated vehicles being issued to a political subdivision, shall have a decal placed on each side of the vehicle, which I believe would be the doors, and a decal shall be affixed to the rear of the vehicle when space allows, such as a tailgate of a truck or an SUV.
Oh, yeah, right in front of my face. Okay, thanks a lot. That's great. The question I did have, though, I think more importantly, is that on section 99-4, rules of operation, section G, all accidents or vandalism involving county vehicle, right? That's section, it's on page three. I believe that we should have something in there, because, as I understand it right now, it is policy the sheriff's department should be notified immediately on any vehicle accident or circumstance where a violation is incurred, that the sheriff's department needs to be contacted to investigate. It's policy right now, but it's not in here. And I think we've already witnessed in the more recent time period where an accident's occurred and the sheriff's office was not notified, and I think that's very important that the sheriff does that, not only for, to make sure that everything is about board, but to make sure we don't, we aren't exposed to undue liability. That would be some type of assurances that, that we're following proper procedure. So I would recommend that we, and I, not for emotion, but just as a consensus, because this is an introduction, that we try to rework section G to also include the fact that the sheriff's department should be notified upon any violation. Everybody okay with that?
Fine.
That's all, that, I mean, when I worked there, that was always a requirement.
Right.
If a county, state, or federal vehicle got in an accident, you had to do an acres report, it had to be investigated.
Okay. All right. So we're okay with that? That's the only recommendation I had, and we don't need to.
I will defer to Mr. Illuminati about Hartford County being the only county, because I'm not sure, I'm not saying that's incorrect, I just don't know. The state of Maryland does have similar language for the state in vehicles, so it's not unique to Hartford, and it would not be unique to Wycomico. I don't know what other, the other 21 counties do, or Baltimore City, but the state of Maryland has somewhat similar language.
I can say, when I did some research, Cecil County does have legislation in their county code. It's not as in-depth as Hartford County's that we use as a guide, but Cecil County does have some. We also looked at Howard County's policy. There's, necessarily isn't in their code, but they have a separate standalone policy.
Talk about a little bit of liability here. If we don't have a law regulating what our employees do as far as driving county vehicles, if we don't have it in law, if one of our county employees goes out and does something wrong, whether it's run a red light, drank too much, or whatever, or, and we find out that they have been a habitual drinker, or an habitual, say, they've run red lights a lot, got a lot of points, if we don't have that in law, the county can be a lot more liable. So it's a big liability issue when you talk about not having laws and regulations about what your county employees are going to do.
Well, most of this is good, and I like it, but more importantly, I think we're really missing the mark if we don't put drug testing in here.
It's fine, put it in there.
It needs to be in there.
Would you like a consensus on that?
I'm surprised the insurance company doesn't require.
Yeah. Just carry. Are you suggesting that by consensus, we have Mr. Benson reworking that to?
I think it needs to be amended, yeah.
Is the council okay with that?
Same way with what you did, Jim. Everybody's okay with that?
And I'm assuming that would be, in which section, do you think, Mr. Benson?
Yes. Mr. Baker, what do you, I don't, I don't mean, what do you mean by drug testing, but I mean, are we saying if there's an accident, there has to be a drug test? Are you saying that every employee, in order to be able to drive, has to have a?
No, 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 in an accident, in an accident. It's about liability.
Would it be a time limit within so many hours, or?
I mean, most, most agencies that I'm familiar with, if you get in an accident, as soon as you're rendered aid, if any aid needs to be done, then you're taken straight to, whether it's your docs in, or whoever you're contracted with, and you give a urine sample.
Immediate, in other words.
Yeah, within, I mean, within, as quick as possible. And if you deny it, could be subject for termination.
And that's already encompassed in state law, though, so when, if an individual gets into an accident, and all of this is predicated upon law enforcement actually responding, so a single vehicle accident, the person drives off, if the employee comes in with an excuse the next morning about, or says, I crashed it that morning, it's going to be a problem. But if two vehicles get into an accident, one of them's a county vehicle, and law enforcement responds, and they believe that the driver's under the influence or impaired by a substance, they have legal measures to already drug test them, to do a, for alcohol, to arrest them, to take them to the barrack and do a BAC test for significant vehicles, to do a blood draw if necessary. The original version had some drug testing in it, but it created a separate round of problems, which is cannabis use, and how long cannabis use remains in one system versus are they actively using.
versus are they actively using. That's another problem in figuring this out, is having individuals register adult-use cannabis versus medicinal cannabis, versus did I use the night before, am I still under the influence? If I get into an accident 24 hours later, it may show up in my system, but I'm not impaired. And again, that goes back to the state law allows the law enforcement officer, the specialist on the scene, to make that determination of whether to take those additional steps and do, have a drug recognition expert come out, but under state law, depending on the situation, there can be two hours or up to four hours, depending on how invasive the request is, a breath sample versus a blood draw.
But you're, but you're talking about above the legal limit. I think what we're talking about is, do they have any alcohol in their system? Do they have any drugs in their system? Are they impaired just by this much? You know as well as I do, there's people that pass FSTs, field sobriety test, all the time, and they pass, but they're still under the influence. They weren't, they had, they weren't that far, and they were able to pass field sobriety.
And I believe one of the recommendations I made was to use the CDL standard, which is not that .05, I believe it's a .02, and that if an employee has a .02 or greater, so that's the standard for individuals to have a CDL, a commercial driver's license to drive an 18-wheeler, large trucks, that if that's what the Federal Department of Transportation uses, then that could be the standard that the county adopts.
Maybe I'm missing something. Maybe you can help me with it. I don't understand the big deal of implementing a drug testing program if vehicles, our vehicles are involved in an accident. I don't know why there has to be, I mean, are we really going to say, well, the county employee had alcohol in his system, but he was only a .1, whatever you would make it? Is it okay that he has alcohol in his system and he's been there at work for four hours? Like, like to me, it should be a go, no-go deal.
He shouldn't be driving at all if they've got alcohol.
Yeah, or drugs, or whatever. I don't...
For what, I mean, not...
I understand what you're saying, for a conviction, you know, above the legal limit, I understand that, but as a county employee driving our vehicles, if they're involved in an accident, I don't know why it's not as simple as, okay, you're good, you're not hurt, you and I need to go to your doc's in, you're going to have to give a urine analysis, everything's good, you're good.
And that's where more of a policy manual, and we can put all of that in a policy manual, and then put refusals, termination, a certain, and, and put the, the process, because the employee's going to, could potentially at some point challenge a due process claim and say, well, I was unfairly punished because I refused to go, or I was unable to go to your doc's in at that time, because, well, my shift ended, am I going to be paid overtime for that? These are all considerations that we have when we first reviewed it, and if it happens at the end of a shift, and then somebody has to go to the hospital for, or go to your doc's in, they wait three hours, is the county going to pay overtime for that?
Sure, it's a requirement.
And so that's where, again, and...
It can be put in legislation as easy as it can be put in policy, policy manual.
But it can't, the amendment, the amendment process to legislation is different than the amendment process to a manual.
I just want to point out that 99-6 does authorize the county executive to submit rules, regulations, and procedures, so she could develop her own rules and regulations that coincide with this.
Section 99-4L, an employee shall not operate a vehicle while having a measurable blood alcohol concentration, or in violation of Maryland Transportation Article 21902. My recollection is, and it's been a while, my recollection is that when we reviewed Mr. Illuminati's Red Lines, that we had that discussion, and the suggestion was that county employees should not be driving vehicles with alcohol in their system, period. And there shouldn't be a .02 or a .03 guideline, it should be an absolute requirement, no alcohol in your system if you're driving an alcohol vehicle. Now that, obviously, the council can change that, but that's what's in here, and that was a discussion that occurred. So right now, this says you can't have alcohol in your system, period.
So I would guess to try to wrap this up, then I would say the two consens, the two issues that we've drawn a consensus on, one would be the sheriff investigates, that would be for 99-4G, and what Mr. Baker is recommending would be 99-4L. Is that okay with everybody by consensus?
Yep, sorry.
All right, and this is an introduction, so this will come back as the actual bill itself, we'll move a vote on it, there would be an opportunity for amendments, et cetera. Any other, any other discussions?
And the alcohol, I know we focused on alcohol, but we're talking alcohol and drugs to include cannabis.
It's a different story, though.
I, I guess, Mr. Benson and I need guidance to draft some...
Yes, I, yes, that's fine.
Yeah, the trouble with cannabis, I don't know that there's any detection yet.
You can put it in, you can put it in. If we can't detect it, we can't detect it. But I think it's okay to put it in.
Well, I mean, this, this doesn't say you can't have cannabis in your system, or whatever that's worth. It does say you can't have alcohol.
The trouble with cannabis is it stays in your system for so long, it's going to be hard to determine if they did it today, and they're actually under the influence.
Depends just how much smoke's rolling out the window and stuff.
I mean, and again, that's, when Mr. Benson and I discussed, it went back to, if this is an accident, and it's more than an accident, a single car accident that's observed in daylight, that the entity can't just drive off, law enforcement is going to respond, they're going to take an assessment of the car, smell the odor of either raw or recently burnt marijuana emanating from the vehicle, could possibly conduct a search of the vehicle, depending on the situation, and provide additional evidence that would help indicate that the cannabis use was recent. But I believe that was another reason why this did get stuck, is addressing the cannabis situation. So the Department of Law and the council's attorney will work on, ideally, an amendment that we both believe captures the intent of council.
That'd be great, that'd be great. And I think it would be good to include cannabis, because we just initiate the process that would allow a department head to then make their own decision as to how they want to address it. So we'll go with that, and it may benefit everyone, if you'd like, Mr. Benson, to maybe have a conversation with Ms. Tyler, and, and how they're, they're handling it at Corrections. Might help us, give us a better perspective. So that being said, all those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill 2024-12, inclusive of the two agreements for consensus, say aye.
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 Oppose. Motion to carry the introduction of legislative bill 2024-12 as, not necessarily amended.
We can have the public hearing on December 17th at 10:00 AM.
Okay, passes unanimously. Okay. I don't know how we're going to phrase that, since we didn't amend it, I just, the introduction as, correct.
You didn't formally amend it.
I know we didn't, I was just saying, though, but the introduction of legislative bill 2024-12 as adjusted. I'm just going to put it on the record. You all can do, deal with it however you, however you want. Passes unanimously. Mr. Illuminati, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make coming to podium, please state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. Good morning.
Oh, shit.
You got a pen, please. You know that, it's counted. I got one.
Good morning.
Morning.
This has been an eventful meeting. On a side note, GPS monitoring, it's good for vehicles, I do it for my company vehicles. But on this morning, I've given you a copy of my comments and supporting documentation. Good morning, my name is Monica Brooks, I live in the community, and I'm not, and I'm also president of Wycomico County NAACP, and I also serve as the State Commissioner for Environmental Justice and Sustainable Communities. We all take issue, which takes issue for environmental justice, very seriously. I am here representing many community members and organizations who cannot be here because it's work time. On our community, the Concerned Citizens Against Industrial CAFOs, which I'm co-founder, the Sentinels of Eastern Shore Health, and others, here's our concerns. There's a new project at 8665 Hickory Mill Road, evidently has obtained an air permit with no public notice given to neighbors and no public process for the county. There is a permit to construct a biorefinery plant in an ag residential community, which is already overburdened with pollution. We've used the Maryland EJ screen, that's Environmental Justice screen, that was created to recognize marginalized communities or overburdened communities, to analyze the one to two mile radius around the project, and the sensitive populations and the overburdened risk. Here are some of the stats, okay? The area is 28.51% poverty, percent minority 28.66. The asthma emergency room discharge rate's 90.67%, but the state of Maryland is 89%. Myocardial infraction areas percentage for that area 90.27%, but for the state of Maryland 87.56. Low birth rates 68.9, and the state of Maryland 81.13. Lack of broadband access 10.9%. And you have all these other statistics that are before you, but I do want to jump ahead to talking about particulate matter, 77.85% in this area. They're already overburdened with polluted issues, and issues of asthma, and respiratory diseases, as well as rates of cancer. And we've seen, we've included emails, which I've given to all of you, with attachments from MDE and MDA. While the operation is claiming the ag building is for storage, the air permit clearly defines the installation of a bio refinery permit. We have been here before, okay? We know what happened with the DAF tank and how that was slid in, and it was very difficult to get information on this project. I'm tired of citizens having to do, have to practically have law degrees just to find out what's going on in their community, and even when we called here, and I made multiple calls here to that county and planning and zoning, I kept being told you have to do a PIA request, just to get basic information, and we never used to have to do that before. So it's important for the citizens to be fully aware what's coming into their backyard and what potential hazards can happen, not to mention the fact this permit was given and before the property, the property was sold, and then the permit was given to a person before they even acquired the property. So there's a lot of little spaces here, so we really want you all to examine this, and we would like to request a moratorium on anything moving forward, especially as relates to biorefinery on this project, until we can do more research and evidence, because things seem to be moving quickly, but again, without public input.
Hi, I'm Joe White, I'm a resident of Wycomico County. For the last six months, a group of citizens, including myself, have utilized our experience here, attending the county council meetings, as well as several committee meetings, planning and zoning, parks and rec, et cetera, to get information out to the community. And we've chosen to do this through a show we have on PAC 14 called Open Agenda. We, we really want the community to be part of the conversation, as much as, obviously, we have our own opinions. My, my question here is, how do we as a county plan when our state government is starting to prove to be very unreliable? And I really think, unfortunately, the burden falls on the seven of you and our county executive, and I think we have to be very tactful. I will tell you, we're going to cover this in depth. So there's a couple of things in particular that are coming up. One, you have a work session later today about repealing the Horizon Fund. Now, I'm not here to tell you exactly my opinion on it, I'm actually going to stay and watch the work session to get more information. But at a time that we're starting to have funding gaps across the board, we are, we are at a dire straits to start giving any extra money away to any group, okay, without a return on investment, as Councilman Hastings talked about earlier. At the CIP meeting last week, our appointed delegate, Barry Beecham, actually asked the audience if they were ready to revisit the revenue cap. And I don't know that a lot of the public understands that the majority of the county revenue actually comes from the income tax, not the property tax, and that not all of your property tax goes to the county. A lot of it goes to the state, and the state actually controls that part through their assessment of your home. It's very dangerous to think that we're going to get rid of the revenue cap when we don't even know what parts of the mandates are going to come down from the state unfunded. Just last night or this morning, depending on when you woke up to watch the news, the state has come up and said that they're not going to be able to come up with their part of the Fruitland primary. This is unacceptable. I want to find out if this is someone in our government playing politics, or are, are the county taxpayers going to be on the hook? Because I could tell you, Fruitland primary needs to be built, I'm not sure it needs to cost $56 million, but how can an entity like the state mandate so many things to go into that school that aren't the school, and then back out of their funding? Put these folks in front of you, let them answer our questions. I'm talking Chris Adams, Mary Beth Carosa, Barry Beecham himself. How do we plan on proceeding with the library, when you see just now, with the, with the civic center cost overruns, you see some of the other funding gaps with the school? We, we've already spent money for next year's budget on library renderings, and we're going to anticipate that the same state government come up with grants for us to do this library when we don't even know. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Good morning. Joe Vanosa, Wycomico, and a friend of Joe. So I just wanted to say, if I could, two issues. First is that I want to thank all the members of the community these last few months, and others who answered the call to help try to bring about a more transparent form of government. During this whole campaign on question A, we were certainly outspent, we were largely silenced as far as local media outlets go, often people mention that specifically. Perspectives against having an executive form of government were routinely shunned by other entities, including the Greater Salisbury Committee and the Chamber of Commerce. And of course, we dealt with a lot of misinformation from a local blogger whose sole mission it was to sort of convince the public about certain misinformation. And in spite of all that, in spite of all those factors, we had 20 and a half thousand citizens vote against the existence of an executive. Now, yes, the other side won, they won by about four percentage points in terms of the overall outcome. But it means that at this point, there's still a lot of skepticism and a lot of concern, not just people that are against the current county executive and all the things that we've alluded to even in this meeting, but there are a lot of people who still believe that the position itself shouldn't exist. So it's going to be imperative for this executive, the administration, and the council to figure out a way to get through some of these issues. And this ties right back in with Mr. White's comment regarding things like the Fruitland primary funding. It, it blows my mind that when the state, again, just released its announcements, that everything is on the table, because we're going to deal with state budget cuts, you don't have to be a brainiac to figure out that we're going to have severe tariffs implemented at the federal level, that's going to create more inflationary pressures, we're looking at a really bad financial firestorm all around, and that, I don't care about your politics, that's just math. We're at a point where we need more public awareness of some of these policies, and I implore the council to continue to hold the executive's feet to the fire, as well as to get our local officials here to continue to reveal to us what exactly is going on with these priorities. Lastly, you know, this was a very bitter experience for a lot of us in terms of the question A issue. I mean, I personally had a lot of fun with it, and that's, you know, putting aside threats, and, you know, at times, me and other people being publicly dragged through the, the mud, so to speak. But this was a righteous fight, and it was a fight that has built something important, not just our show, Open Agenda, but a broader approach to trying to get people, regardless of your Democrat, Republican, Independent, on a common issue that we all have to live with, because we all live in Wycomico County, and we've made some good friendships in this process, and I'm proud to know these people for what they've done. And I want to say to everybody, regardless of where you stand on the aisle, you need to start thinking about putting Wycomico County first, because in the end, we all have to live here, and I trust this council will continue to do that, particularly by holding this executive office accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanusen.
Good, still morning, everyone. I'm Nancy Royce, I'm Salisbury city resident. Please rescind the... Please rescind the Horizon program, which waives property tax revenue for an extended period to subsidize investors in development projects in downtown Salisbury. The county needs tax revenue now. We are facing imminent decreases in outside funding and increased expenditures, partly due to the state's huge deficits announced recently. Taxpayers like me will not take lightly to a tax increase of any kind when we are watching millionaire developer investors get big tax breaks. The county's proposed capital projects are sorely needed and are bare bones. Do they reflect the added facilities costs of all the planned big developments? I doubt it. Costs for associated school replacement and new facilities like parks, the water sewer and solid waste systems will go up with each development. As a matter of fact, we should turn the tables and require developers to pay a fee to cover the added costs of EMS, public transportation, and other public facilities to make their developments a success. Many jurisdictions do this, instead of giving a giant freebie for them to build, sell, and leave us with unfunded impacts. Sustainability seems to have been lost on most of these big developments. The original plan for the Ross was for it to be 12 stories tall and have a green roof. However, the owners changed their tune, now it has 14 stories and no green roof. This building puts an unusual demand on the landfill as solid waste from the residents is dumped into a 14-story trash chute and therefore has no recycling. As of about 10 years ago, the city policy for new multifamily developments started requiring private waste haulers, which translates to no recycling. This puts an added burden on the county landfill, which is getting overcapacity and currently needs another cell constructed per the proposed capital projects plan. Incidentally, providing further insult to our environment, the county is using dirt to cover the landfill from its nice property at Connelly Mill Road, thereby preventing it from being turned into a much-needed park. And more field dirt goes to building on the 100-year floodplain, where the lowest level of housing must be raised two to four feet by bringing in fill to meet lenders' requirements to get flood insurance. Per a licensed excavation contractor I know to raise an acre, just one foot takes 123 12 cubic yard dump truck loads of field dirt. Portions of Salisbury downtown are having to add two to four feet under new buildings. However, we don't need to put the housing there. Here's why. We have plenty of housing being built on non-floodplain sites, contrary to what investors and their politician friends say. Just since September 2024, 250 units have received occupancy permits, and 2,186 more are on tracks to be completed. So to support these new residents, more funding now, next year, and every year after that, will be needed to provide the services and amenities modern families and individuals I have a list in the email I sent you of a few of those new developments that are underway. The county cannot defer the needs associated with these new developments and must find, rather than defer revenue. Thank you.
Good almost afternoon, Robert Taylor County resident. And before I start on why I came here, Ms. Brooks, I do have a law degree, and I find it often impossible to get information, too. You ain't alone, kiddo. Anyway, I stood here at this podium less than 24 hours ago. City council felt like I was in the land of Oz as they were discussing that Greater Salisbury Committee housing study. Won't get into the weeds, but just sitting here at this meeting, I felt like I was almost back in Oz again. Now, going down the Yellow Brick Road, I mean, let's start with the discussion on the Civic Center. Mr. Winn made the best suggestion. Let's look at this further. Yes, this could have been postponed to at least another council meeting. As Ms. Olin said, we could also ask for an extension, might not get it, but we could ask for it. It doesn't sound like there was any value engineering done on this project, and frankly, I think the design is, in some ways, garish. That fence with the lettering on it, yeah, that might be needed for some security, but certainly the letter doesn't, lettering doesn't do that, and it could easily put bollards in and probably cut the cost of that. You could easily reduce the cost of that by half a million to a million dollars by simple value engineering. My next-door neighbor does it for a construction company in Rockville. He could certainly be engaged for that. I'll move on. I want to speak a little bit about the Horizon program, and I've sent you information, I won't reiterate that, but it really is time to stop it. And I want to point out that there's an argument going around that somehow, three years ago, when the legislation was passed, that was a promise to the Ross and the other would-be developers, that they would get this. Not so. The day that was passed, back in August of 2021, it was amended. And I'll read from the minutes. Mr. Count Cannon says he believes, in a prior work session, it was discussed about the fact that the viability of the individual projects as a whole would be decided on by the council, instead of the finance department. He said he believes Mr. Wilber agreed to come up with some verbiage based on what council requested. Mr. Wilber said, in paragraph G, under applications, there are two paragraphs, and he thought council might add a second paragraph and push two down to become three, in other words, a new number two. And the language that he proposed for that was, "After review by the finance department, the application shall be submitted for approval by the county executive and the county council by resolution." Mr. Wilber explained, "That puts an extra step in there, finance department review, then executive and council review before it is final." So there is no way that any promise was made. And I'll just move on by saying that this is kind of equivalent to Mr. Simpson's dogate my homework excuse for not filing the application in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Mikel Darlene, Wycomico County, and I didn't prepare any comments, so hope I don't ramble too much. But, you know, first of all, I wanted to just say that last Tuesday night, we had the Capital Improvement Plan public meeting. I know I saw a couple of you guys there. For those who weren't, I hope you guys got to see it on the PAC 14. I was so encouraged to see the turnout that we had, and overwhelmingly, people showed up to talk about how important Connelly Mill Park is to this community, to our citizens for what it can give to us, for the benefits of health, community, mental wellness. I've been sent here all day, and I've heard about the challenges and the things that are happening, but I think we really need to kind of look on what Mr. Hastings said, the return on investments. We're getting a lot of money from the dirt there, and it was always meant to be in conjunction, these two uses, the dirt and the park. They were meant to be formed together, they were meant to support each other, and they were meant to give both of those benefits to our county. At this point, trying to separate the two, not only, you know, hurts us from a financial perspective, but it also breaks trust. It breaks the trust that was formed when the plan was made with public input. And if we look from the very beginning, there's been huge amounts of public support. When we were looking at the conversion, tons of people showed up. When we're looking at putting it, taking it off, where nobody knew and there was no transparency, and all of a sudden it disappeared, there was an outcry. We had a petition with over 1,200 people. We've had every major environmental organization get involved. We've had biking, birdwatching, running, hiking clubs. Everybody showed up to say, "This matters." At the meeting, again, on Tuesday night, they showed up to say, "This matters." This is a win-win. This is something that can not only fulfill a promise, bring back trust and accountability in our government, you know, but it can serve the purposes of the landfill, the public health crisis, the mental health crisis we're having, access and equity to green space. What Ms. Monica Brooks said is exactly true. We need more information coming to us about what's going into our backyards. We need more accountability about how our public land is being used and what's going to be brought to our neighborhoods. And we need our two branches of government to keep that promise that's being said, to work together, to give us that transparency, to give us that accountability, and to give us the highest and best use of our public resources. Thank you.
Dave Cooper, Wycomico County resident. Members of the council, this past election did show me one thing. The people still do believe in the balance of power. The people of Wycomico County spoke and said they want an executive to balance out the power of the council. The people have seen some things this council has overstepped on, for instance, Mr. Leitzel's position. You, the council, have lost two court cases in regards to this, and yet you still filed another appeal. How much money has this costed the county taxpayers? Throughout this meeting, we've talked about, I've heard you talk about, how we need more money, how we need better delegation of money, how we need to better repurpose money. How about we stop wasting some and work together? Another instance was the question A. Whether you were for or against, it did waste a lot of money, and due to the fact, I mean, a lot of you said you represented the majority voice in your district. I would venture to say this past election said you didn't represent the majority voice in your district. The executive's office is working to improve a lot of things in this county. For instance, one of the things she's improved is our bond rating. I believe you guys have seen all the news on that, that our bond rating has increased significantly. Other things the executive office has worked on bettering in our community is getting the airport runway extended, as well as getting the new schooling for the airline mechanics, which, by the way, is going to be integral in getting more jobs here on the eastern shore, as well as potentially bringing more airlines over to the eastern shore as well. I will reiterate, the people spoke on election day, and they spoke in a big way. Please stop fighting with the executive office. And I can tell, my words are already falling on deaf ears, because since I've stepped up here, a couple of you have actually even refused to look at me. And that's fine. That just means I'll come to more meetings and I'll speak more. In this meeting, I have witnessed how much money this, this council is saying we need to repurpose. Let's talk about how much you've already wasted. And looking at attorney's fees, court costs, filing fees, appeals fees, and everything else in regards to everything that you've lost so far, it's upwards of a quarter of a million dollars. How else could we have repurposed that quarter of a million dollars? I mean, a judge already said no once, you appealed it, said no a second time, you're now appealed it again. Stop wasting our money and use it the right way, or maybe we'll look for ways to actually hold you personally accountable for some of the wastes. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Mike Goldberg, Wycomico County. I didn't intend to say anything today, but I had to, have to respond to this. Perhaps it's time for the county executive to start cooperating with the will of the council. Question A was not a waste of money. It was an opportunity for the people to decide how they are to be governed in the future. It came pretty darn close. Almost half of the county, at this time, believes that we should have eliminated the county executive's office. I can certainly make a pretty strong case for it. When the executive chronically abuses power, it is the duty of this council to stand up to the county executive to ensure that the, such powers are not further abused. The litigations that are in process are certainly part of that. I would hope that they would be successful. You're not always successful in everything that you try to do, but you darn sure have to make an effort, as this council has, to hold the executive responsible. I would also add, with respect to the runway at, at the airport, it had nothing to do with this county executive. That was, you know, a done deal before this executive ever took office. That's simply absurd. With respect to Connelly Mill Park, after the CIP meeting the other day, I had a brief conversation with the county executive, and I heard some outrageous things. For instance, that the Federal Mining Safety and Health Administration would not allow dual use, part park, part quarry. It's interesting, because I had extensive conversations last winter with MSHA, and they said, it was a surface mine, that the federal agency had absolutely no jurisdiction over this. So yet, the county executive claims that they do. She claimed that there, because you couldn't have dual usage because of ingress egress issues, but if parking were limited to the Henry S. Parker Park, and there was a foot bridge crossing over, I do not believe that there would be an ingress egress issue. They've, the county executive's office, you know, has claimed that there is sufficient field dirt out there to last till 2038 now, which far exceeds what the original estimates were at the time that the county acquired the, the Connelly Mills site. I'd be real interested in seeing, where's the geotechnical investigation on this? Where's the test pits? Where's the test borings? Certainly, nobody who is currently employed by the county has the facilities, the equipment, or the background to be able to make that kind of determination. So there is a lack of trust between the citizens, the council, and this county executive, because the disinformation or simply wild tales that are being made up are just inconsistent with the facts. I think we need to further scrutinize the actions of this county executive, be sure that the executive, whoever holds that seat, is reined in. That is the, the obligation of this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
Hi, Holly Campbell, resident of Wycomico County. I agree with certain things said today. I don't want to get too deep in question A, but I do think it was a pretty loud opinion that the public voiced with over 20,000 people voting for it. So clearly, there's a statement that needs to be considered in the future with that vote. And I would say there was a massive misinformation campaign that was running. So the fact that even 20,000 or 46% of the people still voted with that, it says a lot. Back to Connelly Mill Park, I listened to the whole thing this morning about the Civic Center, and, you know, we see a lot of parallels with Connelly Mill Park, and, and not only us, but the tri-county council saw those same parallels, which was why Connelly Mill Park was on the comprehensive economic development plans, which are what get used, in my understanding, because I'm looking at it still, and, you know, we've looked at this for the last year. You know, right here, I'm looking at the 23, 24 SEDS plans, and goal number four, vibrant communities, is one of their four. Actually, goal one is healthy economy, goal two is competitive workforce, goal three is infrastructure, goal four is vibrant communities. Connelly Mill Park was on this plan to be submitted for EDA money, which we just listened to how we got $5.5 million for the Civic Center. And I'm looking at this, like, anybody can go online and look at it. The first page of goal four included Connelly Mill Park in the past, and it, and it called it a regional project, supporting Somerset, Wycomico, and Worcester County. And right under that, on the next page, interestingly, was the Wycomico Civic Center exterior project, and it described the $5.5 million federal grant that was given. I shared some statistics at the CIP meeting the other night. Obviously, I, I read that the federal EDA money can be up to 50% for projects. Clearly, we've got that money for the Civic Center. We should be getting this project back on this plan so that it can be eligible again for EDA money. And then project open space money, which is vital. You know, this property being gifted to the county, it had the unique attributes that really qualify it for program open space money, and to be handed something like that is truly a gift. You know, when people qualify for a VA loan, like, you're, it's like the best of the best of loans, and if you can get that, you take it. If you can't, you're stuck with second best. This property was gifted, and it has the features that qualify it for program open space. Since that land was donated in 2019, Wycomico County property sales have totaled $1.7 billion. That means those sales have put $8.7 million into program open space money. And I say that we get some of our money back to Wycomico County. Leverage that park. We'd need, obviously, just like the Civic Center, and, you know, Josh's point, return on investment is the most important, you're going to put $2 million in, but what are you going to get out of it? How many projects are we going to get? are we going to get we didn't have before? Same thing with the park. There's a lot of activities that come with that. Get that free money, and then use that to drive our money back to the county here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any other public comments? Seeing none. Counsel comments? Josh?
I'll just say, you know, coming out of the election and, you know, hearing all the back and forth regarding the question A, you know, might not be a bad time for us to try to put together, once again, another targeted charter review committee-ish type, something along those lines, where we could have, figure out how we could do a better job improving the interactions between the executive and legislative branch. I think that could be a good idea to move forward with. And then, I guess, the last things I'll say, the Conley Mill Park piece, I was actually good, glad to see that. I was at the CIP meeting of the day. It was good to see that, at least coming back on there. In general, I think that's a positive thing. And, oh, and the last thing I'll just say, I do, you know, as was said earlier, there's the quote, the bad financial storm all around by the Mr. Rubenosa. You know, we really are, I think we do need to be very serious, obviously, just on the federal finances and the state finances, and how that impacts us. I, in no way does it look like things are going to go well. None of the tea leaves you can read, or any signs that you look at, look like things are going to go well in the next couple of years across the board. And so, with as far as money available. So, that's usually a structural impact. Structural impacts usually mean one government can't handle it, it pushes it off to the other. So, usually, the local governments, pardon me, a structural deficit, anytime that there's a structural deficit, it's usually the local government that gets hit the hardest. So, I think we should need to be thoughtful about that going forward. But, yeah.
Well, I asked Laura early this morning before the meeting how many times we had people come in front of us wanting a transfer of funds because of cost overruns. What I should ask, and I don't want to tax either one of our office staff with this, is how many times have we had folks come in front of us and said, "We got to do this right away, or we'll lose the funding"? It seems like we're put up against the wall all the time. It's got to be done right away. Can't be any changes. If we don't, we'll lose the funding. Haven't anybody got any idea? I don't, but there's been a lot of times, you know. So, I voted against that this morning. I'm not against us remodeling the Civic Center. I know that's been in the works a long time. But, like has been mentioned here by many, financial situations with the state government, a few years ago, they cut out all of our roads money. They made us pay half the teacher's pension. That was during the last recession. I'm sure there's somebody sitting around in Annapolis right now making up a list of what we can, what they can do with the counties to try to impact their budget, to make it less impactful for them. So, I'll go down a list here. I'm big on lists. I like lists. Our library. We don't know what it's going to cost us by the time they get moved out there. We don't know what the state's going to pay. It could be a few hundred thousand, it could be into millions. Our airport. Somebody asked me one day how I got along with the rest of the council. I said, "We all get along fine." I said, "I just don't vote along with them most of the time." We, we sit here one day and listen to our airport manager say that, and I can't repeat the exact words, I should have looked it up, I guess, "A revenue guarantee to the new airlines is coming in." Okay, now, I think it's great that we're going to have an airline flying folks back and forth to Florida at a real reasonable rate. But what that revenue guarantee meant was that if that airline, after the federal government, the county, and other people are giving them over a million dollars to come here, if they don't make a profit, we've got to write them a check. Think about that. We're going to be subsidizing people flying back and forth to Florida. We're already subsidizing at a tune of over a million dollars, and I don't care what anybody says. Federal money's still taxpayers' money. But, somebody's going to walk in and sit down to that desk in front of us one of these days and say, "Hey, we didn't make a profit. You know, you owe us this much money." So, we got the Board of Education. We got the Kerwin still out there in the never-neverland somewhere. I don't know where it's at. We keep hearing how they keep changing it. The Fruitland primary, the state said they're not going to pay for that, like they should. See the chief of Salisbury Fire Department sitting out there. I understand that we've, some of the council members have been working with him. There's going to be probably a million or $2. It's going to have to go to them in the next year or so. The Verizon building. We don't know what it's going to cost to go to the Verizon building that we bought. It's going to be 200,000, 500,000, a million to get moved, to get the Health Department moved out there. The other night, I heard that, at the CIP meeting, that one of our delegates stood up and asked us that we should readdress the revenue cap. If anybody owns property, or even if you rent property, but owners get the assessments, they know that their property taxes has gone up substantially in the past couple of years, whether it's your house, your farm, your commercial business. I mean, it's unbelievable. The, you know, and then somebody said, "Oh, man, your house is worth more if you want to sell it." Well, I don't want to sell my house. A lot of people in here live in their houses. They don't want to sell them. They want to live in them. They want to be able to afford to live in them. If you're going to sell your house, it's great, but the other unfortunate thing, if you want to buy another house, it's going to cost you a lot more. So, that's my little spiel about some of the things, not all of the things, because I'm sure the other six members of this council could sit up here and think of something else that we're going to have coming in front of us in the next few meetings, maybe even this meeting, where somebody's going to want more money. The disparity grant, Josh mentioned that again. This 20, was it 20-some million dollars that our finance director mentioned today that we're going to have in reserves? The disparity grant, if the state pulled that, that could take care of most of that right away. That would be gone. So, yep, I voted no on the Civic Center. And I'd like to see the Civic Center remodeled, but I was real disappointed today when I found out they didn't even go back and try to lower the price. They just, they just came with their hand out again. So, thank you. That's all I've got today.
Comments? Jeff?
Shane? I have one question, and it was told to me, it was asked at a meeting, what is affordable housing? What is affordable housing? Because a lot of houses are being built now. Is either 1,300, 1,800, 2,000. One person is paying a mortgage of 3,000. So, what is affordable housing? I talk about affordable housing, and I'm not talking about $2,000 a month. And the only way that we can help this is to bring high-wage jobs here. That's what we should be talking about. People cannot live, you have people working two and three jobs just to pay the rent, their electric bill. Everything's, like they're saying, is going up. So, the question is, how can we, and people are losing their children in the streets because they can't afford the daycare. So, you have to look at all that. Then I read that the elderly are becoming homeless, from the Christian Shelters report. The elderly now is becoming homeless. So, how do we address these issues in the county, and by me representing the minority districts, which we do have homeownership, you know, out there, but the mortgage is $3,000, guys paying $3,000. He don't even enjoy his house because he's working, driving the truck all the time. But the thing I ask, just think about it. What would you say affordable housing is? What is it? Is it $900 a month, $1,000 a month, $1,800? Because you hear taxes going up, landlord's insurance is going up, maybe landlord license fees are going up. We don't know what affordable housing is. The only way you can make affordable housing, we need to concentrate on our economic development and get good-paying jobs, because right now, when they brought the minimum wage up, they cut the people's hours. So, that's a problem. So, if they give you 20 hours a week, then you have to turn around and work somewhere else for 20 hours, make 40 hours a week. So, just, that's just a thought process when we talk about people. You're leaving certain segments of our community out of discussion. What is affordable housing? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Shane.
We talked a little bit, or some did, about the question A movement, and I supported it, and here's why I supported it. The lack of transparency, which was a continuing thing, the lack of communication, which was a continuing course of conduct, the constant struggles back and forth. And I just want people to know, well, I'll call them the question A guys. The question A guys worked on this for what, four months? Six months? So, in six months' time, that failed by only 4%. Almost half the county wanted to go back to a council, manic former government. You know, they kept saying, "Well, what about transparency? What about, you know, you have seven councilmen that we don't always agree. We didn't agree today." But nevertheless, that, I mean, that failed. But I just hope that this hit the Executive's Office enough for her and her office to realize that we need, we do need to work together, but you can't make somebody work with you. So, hopefully, that'll change. Hopefully, the citizens that did vote for it was enough to get things moving in the right direction.
I just want to thank everybody that came out to vote, no matter what they voted on, how they voted. They were part of the process, and that's important, because if you don't vote, you've got no reason to complain. I believe we're coming up on Thanksgiving, so I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I think that's all I got.
I'm good. I'm good.
The President's comments. I would, some kind of reflect what Shane said. I thought it was very interesting, Shane, that you said that, because that's sort of been my mantra all along. You know, if you want affordable housing, the responsibility of government is to create the incentives in the environment to grow business. And when you grow business, you have more affordable jobs. And when there are more affordable jobs, you'll find out miraculously you have higher wages, which creates more affordable housing, because they can afford those houses that you need to live in. So, again, I think that's important for us to realize that. I'd also would like to say, too, that, you know, the talk about the revenue cap, things like that, and what Shane talked about here as far as expenses, that's very important in Wycomico County, that we start to reel in our costs. There are a lot of issues that have come up over the last, just heck, this, just this fiscal year, where the council's been in a position where we certainly recognize that our revenue is being reduced astronomically, much more than we'd like to see it reduced. But there are issues that come up at the last minute, things that are of high importance and very critical for us to make that decision to approve it, and maybe to start spending beyond our means. And I'm hoping we can come to some type of an end to budget amendments, you know, within six months after we've already formulated a budget. I mean, that's why you have a budget. That's why you're responsible enough to say, "Here, we're going to spend 190 million this year. We're going to spend 200, not 220 or 225." So, I'm hoping that we will get to that end, that it should be recognized that in 2026 budget, we're going to have to try to reel it in. We have increased not just spending, but recurring expenses by millions, which means monies that we forwarded into millions this year, we are going to be obligated to pay that every year in perpetuity. So, again, hopefully, 26 will look good, since, I know Pam has suggested that some of the revenues are lagging and they're improving right now, but sooner or later, based on the circumstances, it may be much more difficult. And I'd certainly have to say, as foreboding for 2026 fiscal year, we're going to need to tighten the purse strings and make sure that we are, fall in line, I think, fiscally with what our expectations are. I'm not going to entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm going to adjust one thing here on the agenda, if I could, real quick. I want to get Ms. Tyler up here. We're going to go to an open work session after I adjourn. We adjourn, we're going to go to work sessions. But I want to put Ms. Tyler in now before we go to lunch, because she's been waiting here two and a half hours. And I don't want her to have to wait another half hour. So, entertain a motion to adjourn. Hang on a second, because I have to do the, entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by a closed work session pursuant to the General Provisions Article Section 3-305B8 to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation to protect the county's legal position. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Legislative meeting is adjourned. First item on the open work session we're going to have is a letter of support for renovation project at the Wycomico County Detention Center. This is Chris Tyler. He's here, the Director of Wycomico County Detention Center, and Ms. Pam Olney, Director of Finance. Good to have you both here.
Thank you.
Do you want to start? Okay. So, this project began in 2021, and it was estimated 1.8 or 9 million dollars. And when I went to the detention center in 2023, in June, we started the process to request a grant through the state. With that, I also asked for an updated estimated cost of the project, which jumped to almost $5.5 million from 1.8 or 9 million dollars. And that might not even be enough when we finally get to it, but that's the estimate that we have from EI associates. So, we have submitted the documentation which you were providing to the state to be considered for the grant. They are considering the grant, and one thing that we are now missing, in order for them to proceed the consideration, is a letter of support from the county council. So, I'm here to ask for a letter of support for the renovation project, for them to consider providing us a grant of 50%.
So, with this letter of support, if, these are renovations that are necessary at the correctional facility. With this letter of support, and if we are awarded the grant, it cuts down the total cost to the county by 50%. If the, if we don't submit for the grant, the full cost, the renovation, the full cost of renovation could still fall on us. But, this is one avenue for us to not have to pay directly out of county funds for the renovations for this building, and this, these renovations are ultimately needed at the facility.
Comments from anyone?
I mean, I think we should submit the letter.
Any other comments? All right. We have a consensus to send the letter.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel's option, if you want to move forward again, or you want to go to break for lunch? All right, we have a request for lunch. We'll be back in half an hour to finish out the open work session, as well as our responsibilities with the Urban Services Commission. We'll be adjourned for recess for half an hour. Thank you. We'll reconvene as Wycomico County Council for Legislative Section 2024-26 for November 19, 2024. Next item on the open work session agenda is the Legislative Bill Number 2024-10, repealing the Horizon Program. We did have a public hearing on this at our last meeting. Thought we would try to at least not do anything that may be considered rash, and so we're having a work session today, just to re-review any options that the council might want to consider. The idea is either sunsetting it or amending it. So, the floor is open for discussion, if anyone has any comments they'd like to make. I would say, from my perspective, I was hoping we could do summary course. I'm not a real fan of the Horizon Program as a whole. I felt that, you know, as a county, we had a situation whereby a district that was designated for the Salisbury area, and I know the city of Salisbury is Wycomico County, but by establishing one district in the city of Salisbury as county council representatives, we were ignoring the other municipalities in Parsonsburg, or Del Mar, or Fruitland, and we were also ignoring citizens in Wycomico County, whereas if somebody wanted to build a $10 million project, I would use the property next to the Civic Center as an example. They wouldn't at least get started there, but all the government subsidies were going to But all the government subsidies were going to someone on Main Street in the city of Salisbury, that wouldn't be fair, uh, to the landowner, that wouldn't be able to to benefit. So I felt that, I feel that the Horizon itself probably does need to be reconsidered, be sunset, to be have a sunset clause. The city of Salisbury also talks a lot about eliminating rentals in in the, in this community, that there's too many rental properties, especially in the city of Salisbury. And yet, from what I've seen, uh, the good portion of all the projects are going to be rentals. A lot of talk about affordable housing. So if you really want to talk about affordable housing, but not affordable renting, I think you need to consider an option whereby any type of government subsidies that we may consider, I think the benefits should be, uh, presented so that the people who benefit from this are maybe the homeowners or the renters, more so than just the developers. So, um, and and I had had tried to get a couple of conversations together over the last couple of weeks, uh, to maybe vet that a little bit more, to see what options there were. Um, I initially had thought that you could have a developer, and this was back, I think, even even in the Malley days, when they were trying to convince, uh, developers that they had a, um, let's say, a subdivision of 20 homes. Try to make four of those 20 homes would have to be dedicated to affordable housing. And the the thought there was that put in cheaper appliances, cheaper floors, et cetera, et cetera, to try to make it affordable. But I'm talking to more recently, uh, actual, um, developers and home builders, uh, they said, there's no way you can get there. There's absolutely no way you you way you can make a substantial difference just by changing the quality of the house itself. So the other option could have been, okay, well, if you're going to have a developer that's going to sell, let's say, 10 houses, and you want two of them to be affordable, do we create tax incentives, uh, similar to the Horizon, where the benefits that go to that developer can be passed on to the homeowner? So if they have 10 houses that are like, let's say, 300,000 apiece, two of the houses could be designated as only being sold for 200,000 apiece. And that difference of 200,100 per each house could be, um, could be reimbursed to the developer through a property tax incentive. Where's the problem with that? In doing that, the developer doesn't own those 10 properties for the entire program of 10 years. Because they'll be, he'll, he or she will be selling those houses as soon as they're built. So you'll immediately, that that developer will be immediately losing their benefit as soon as those houses are sold. My only other option, and I'm not, I'm not advocating for it, but my only other option, this is after a lot of discussion, would be to possibly come up with a very hypothetical plan of a 10-year rent-to-own policy, where the people who are renting to own, still getting the benefits, because the owner, the developer will own it for that 10 years and be able to transfer, uh, whatever property tax savings he has to the actual homeowners themselves. So now, believe me, uh, I don't want that in the press. Imagine that. But no, I just think that's just terribly preliminary. And again, there are certain people who I had appointments with last week that could not make their appointments, uh, for various reasons. So me personally, I would like to vet that, um, you know, in in future discussions. But I don't think it's responsible enough for us to, uh, to continue with the program right now. I think we could at any time, maybe if necessary, redevelop it. And plus, similar to what Shane said, what really is affordable housing? I think the county itself needs to focus on encouraging businesses to come here by creating, uh, business-friendly incentives that will get good businesses here and good jobs. So I think that's first and foremost. Affordable housing, I think, will adjust itself, just based on the free market enterprise system. Whereas right now, we had inflation, we have high interest rates, and we have a mass influx of migrants, and even into our area here today. Somehow or other, the free enterprise system has to adjust itself and bring those back to some type of a norm, where where those type of, uh, costs will come down. And it might be more affordable to have what we call affordable housing. So that's my spiel. Josh?
I was going to add on to that. Of course, I, you know, I live in a dense area in the, you know, in the, in the city. And, um, we, above all else, we need places for people to live. But, you know, the area I live, in between the college, Salisbury University, as well as the hospital, we got folks coming into both of those that are, you know, or they're not staying here for 10 years. A lot of times, they're coming in for, could be a four-month stint at a hospital, or it could be, uh, four years stint at the, you know, at the university. Maybe they stay, maybe they don't. But as a whole, you know, we got to make sure that we got enough spaces for folks to live. And it it shouldn't just be all one type of, you know, only single-family housing in certain areas, or only, you know, multi-family in other areas. And, um, I think the Horizon program, at its heart, I'll say, if there's a positive piece of that, it was, you know, hotel or motel residential, you know, I think it's an incentive zone, that's what it's called, Horizon. But it was intentionally put together for people who are students, or people who are, I, we say students. If you go to the, I actually got a chance, I've only been there one time, I got to tour the Horizon, the Ross building specifically. And that building there, it is in, you know, if my wife and I wanted to move in, we couldn't just, we couldn't, she and I would have to apply. It's it's built like dormitory style. It's not quite like a, um, it's not like, it's not meant, people like, uh, that might have a family, you're not going to move into a building like that. Which is important, because, you know, what you want in your downtown area especially is you want bodies there, as many as possible, that can support the businesses that are nearby. And those people that are there in the urban core, um, you know, they're not, uh, those people don't have kids, they're not, they don't, uh, you know, they tend to be healthier. Uh, so they're not a drain on our services. They're actually in a city with a near, uh, already concurrent services. And they're, you know, they pay for city, uh, pardon me, city taxes, you actually have city fire. So it's not a drain on the county. A project like that is actually positive in so many ways. Now, that being said, it's not like, it's not, there are other types of projects that could be worse off. But as a whole, that's what you want. We want as many people living in an urban core space so that all of the businesses around it can thrive. We've had a dead downtown my entire life, all because we closed off of those, so many of those areas that, um, you know, that used to come into the city of Salisbury. When, uh, my mom always lets me know that, uh, um, uh, she mentioned a couple of times that, you know, we we built the Friendship Bridge recently, connecting basically near the bottom of Camden Avenue, um, to, uh, into the downtown. But, you know, that used to be there not that long ago. I used to, uh, say, not that long ago, my, um, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I was born on Camden Avenue, and then I moved to Mardella. Uh, so I was only about a couple of months old, four months old. But my mom, she said, she used to take us into a, over a stroller into downtown from the, um, the, the, um, Camden Avenue neighborhood. That was just one avenue to try to get people into your central area. When you cut off all of those sections, and all of those ways, and it has to be only driving a car, well, then you, that's why you've killed off your downtown. So I I think as a whole, that's a bigger issue, which, mind you, I don't think we should, the, the, um, I know later this week, the, um, the Planning Commission, the, um, Councilman Holloway's on and others, you know, that, they're going to be talking about this a bit more. But, um, specifically for the Horizon program, I think one thing is important that we we haven't said yet is, you know, I don't, to my knowledge, you know, when we were discussing this, I don't know how many years ago we put this together, but when we were originally discussing it, we were saying, hey, how can we do something that could be helpful for Sharp Town, for, you know, for Fruitland, or, you know, or others? There's eight municipalities, right? And this, you know, Salisbury is just one of them. Salisbury might have been the one that came with a plan and saying, hey, here's where we've mapped it out, this is where we think things should go. But, um, you know, maybe there could be a different program of a different type in some of these other areas where we can be, I I feel like sometimes, uh, you know, I mean, we are helpful to Salisbury very often, because Salisbury is the one that comes for help, and they come with a plan in place. You know, Fruitland, maybe not as much. But there's only two cities in our, in in our county, Fruitland and Salisbury, and one was more active than the other. So I I think as a whole, I would love to see how we could be beneficial to making sure that, uh, folks have access to homes in in all of our eight municipalities, um, or within the priority funding areas, even if it's in the county. So specifically for this program, I'm okay with moving forward with sunsetting, uh, this. But but at the same time, I I think, you know, how long has it been since we had the Old Mall torn down? And we rolled out all of, I mean, look, I think to this day, Wycomico County, we still have the the issue of, if if we have a developer right now, we we got rid of, how long ago was it, 12 years ago, 15 years ago? You got rid of the? Oh, and I was saying, we got rid of all the impact fees. Well, see, like, so we've already rolled out, uh, we've already rolled out, um, rolled, we've already taken away a lot of those, um, impact fees and other kind of ways to incentivize building homes. And I think a place like the Old Mall property, you know, where we've, we've, we've tried to make it as as helpful as possible, there's still no development happening there to this day, and despite multiple tries. So, um, they're going to go to Sussex County, because you can make a whole heck of a lot more money in Sussex County than you can here. But it's not like we don't have space for infill. So I'll take a step back there. I really like being, I think I would love for us to be much more thoughtful about how we are doing this, regardless of the Horizon program or others. I think we need to be much more thoughtful about, um, how we're working, uh, within our comprehensive plan to be able to provide more housing and provide more space, and to do it in a comfortable way, uh, where it's not just favoring one type of group or another. And then I'll just put this also in closing. I mentioned the Ross building. I think we, as a, you know, I think we kind of did them dirty. That the the Ross building specifically, you know, we we put together an incentive plan, we rolled it out for the county, we sold a bill of goods, uh, with this Horizon property, with this particular pro, um, bill. We sold them a bill of goods, they did what they were supposed to do. And on a technicality, we punished them to the tune of, I don't know how much it's going to cost them, but a god-awful amount of money. But I don't think that's good for business in general. You know, we, the reason why we're incentivizing, it's not just about money going to some rich developer. These are developers who literally live here in our county. These aren't, uh, you know, these aren't billionaires sending rocket spaceships and things like that, you know? These are people that live here, that have money, that wanted to invest, and they hired jobs. They they hired concrete bricklayers, you know, folks that actually live here in this county. So in closing, I I think, I think, well, I also see a a letter here from a lawyer's office. I feel like we're going to be back in 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 another lawsuit if we don't try to fix that, rectify that situation with the Ross building specifically. But, uh, for this program, I'm okay with sunsetting it. But I do think it'd be great to work with folks like the, you know, the Greater Salisbury Committee, or whomever else, I'd, you know, to come up with maybe, um, to come up with a better approach to how we're being much more thoughtful, not just in Salisbury, but around the county, and, um, in this, so I'll pause there.
If you want to take, um, have affordable housing, you know, regulations, state regulations has caused problems with sprinkler systems and EV hookups, that's all, that's all caused, just not to have affordable housing, more inspections. But, um, the main way to have affordable housing is have competition among builders. So they'll get out there, and and when you take something like the Horizon program and giving, um, giving one set of builders, or whoever's going to build in that area, a tax break doesn't seem like fair competition. The, um, the Old Mall is interesting, because that happened right after I came on the council, and they wanted a TIF. The council was wise enough to turn that down. That was basically a tax giveaway like the Horizon program is. If we, um, want to make housing more affordable, we take whatever the Horizon program, and use the Ross as an example, and take that money and lower the tax rate by that amount. And that would benefit everybody in the county. You lower the tax rate by whatever you were going to give the Ross, or anybody else that was going to build in, in the Horizon program. Sussex County, Josh mentioned Sussex County. If anybody's driven on eastern Sussex County lately, um, I don't know that we want Wycomico County to be quite like eastern Sussex County. I'm sure a lot of people moved there, because they moved from like Pennsylvania, New Jersey, um, or the western shore of Maryland, because it's supposedly the taxes are cheaper. But, um, it'll take you an hour to get to Lewis Delaware now, or hour and a half, where you used to be able to drive there in 40 minutes. The Ross, you know, I don't think, I don't, you know, I'm satisfied with the way I voted on the Ross. Right after we passed that with the Ross, um, or passed this Horizon, 51% of that was sold to an out-of-town group of people. So it's not just local people that own it now. So I'm, I'm in favor of sunsetting, doing away with the Horizon program. I think that's all I've got written down here right now.
Any comments?
I agree a lot with what Josh was saying. I think I'd be in favor of sunsetting the Horizon program, and taking another look at it to how we can create something else that will impact a larger area of the county. And with respect to the the Ross situation, I've, I voted before to to, uh, let the tax credit go through on on that particular situation, because I think the, uh, the county fumbled the football on that one. Mr. Simpson checked all the boxes, did everything he was required to do and asked to do. Especially with, uh, the amount of the investment, which was way more than the minimum requirement. So I'd like to see us take another look at that, if that's, if that's possible.
I don't know that we need to turn this into a debate, Jeff, but he didn't do what he was supposed to do. I mean, it's very, very plain. I mean, even this attorney's letter that we've got today basically says he didn't do what he was supposed to do.
The county didn't give him an opportunity to do.
Well, he'd do is walk in the door, wrote, open 40 hours a week.
The county was required to come up with some type of guidelines.
Didn't say that. It said, all he said, says he was to apply.
The bill, and if you look at the whereas section of the bill, it clearly states that the county is to create, um, guidelines in order to make the, in order to establish the process. And the county did not establish guidelines. You know, developers are supposed to know where to go, they should know where to go. And the county, the county, there's a lot of blame to go around, I don't think the county did that. And when the county actually paid, gave him a discount on his property taxes, what developer isn't going to think that's already been done? Why would you apply for that if you've already got it? And that was the county that did that.
The size of that discount and the size of the one he was supposed to get, it's a big difference, so.
Well, you don't know exactly how that assessment is done. And also, the assessment, I believe that the assessment, they said Trick should have triggered his 90 days to, uh, file an application. The building was only, if I remember correctly, I think the building was only half-done. It was only half-done.
So we didn't, we didn't, we didn't make the promise of giving that tax credit in the first place, just like, I think it was Mr. Taylor or somebody at the podium said. We didn't make that promise that it was going to happen anyway.
Well, we created a program. We said, hey, come, you build, you do this part, you put your investment in, we'll follow through. That's the, assuming, we did, we say, the follow-through is literally through a legislature, through law. And we, we completely fumbled that. I I think the bigger issue here is, no matter what we do, is, I cannot stand the fact that Wycomico County is is moving so hardly in the direction of trying to make, trying to punish business owners. Folks, if if people are supposed to come in, they want to invest here, we shouldn't be punishing them once, you know, we shouldn't pull the rug out from underneath of them just because, you know, on a technicality or whatever. So I think if we put together a new program, or or any kind of one that comes together, we need to be able to stick to it if we, you know, this, this is only going to continue to upset more of the folks at the, not only the business owners, but you've got investment in the state, you've got investment in, you know, municipalities and time and, so.
I'm on, I'm on planning and zoning, like you said earlier. And we work diligently and bend over backwards to try to work with developers to get things done in Wycomico County. And, you know, we've got a large, major developer coming in right now that's, um, that's a commercial.
St. John's.
Yeah, St. John's. They're not getting a tax break. We've got several, I mean, dozens in the past few months of, um, pre-approved projects that plan and zone in without tax breaks. You know, these people are investing their own money. They're not, they're not looking for handouts. And so, I mean, it can happen without, without a tax incentive, so.
Right. And that's why I think everyone here has said that we think we should have sunset the Horizon. But that isn't the situation with the Ross.
I understand. We're off the subject, I understand.
Yes, yeah. It's a bit different. Any other comments?
I want to say something. I've had several calls about this. And, um, when I read this letter, and I agree, we did not do what we were supposed to have done. He was getting, from my understanding, he was getting an enterprise credit. He was already getting a credit, but it was called an enterprise credit. He, so if it was called a Horizon credit, it would not be said, but it was called an enterprise credit, so he was already getting the credit. So, and I know people are going to be mad with me, but I think- So, and I know people are going to be mad with me, but I think if we did not have the farm, proper forms, he went to the city. I'm quite sure he contacted the administration and probably didn't get a response. He admits that he was late because he didn't have the proper policies, application forms, so he used the application form from the city so he'd get the credit. And he was assuming that the enterprise was the Horizon. And then he questioned, he's the one brought it to people's attention that it wasn't the Horizon, it wasn't Horizon. So the Ross and the tenant credit should not be ignored due to a timeless filing issue when the project meets the purpose for establishing the credit. He met the obligation. I don't like doing this, but he met the obligation. But we didn't meet our obligation. We didn't have the forms. We didn't have proper notice. He was finished the property February 15th, two buildings occupancy was done February 15th, 2024. In other words, he had completed the, the project. So you go in here and look at this big tall building, something triggered somebody's mind that, oh, we haven't done an application for the Horizon building, but that wasn't done. So I, to make this go away, people, in other words, people expressing, I'm being pulled different directions. I think we need to be all honesty, give him this credit or this tax break. And then I agree with the sunset of the Horizon building until, and I think what we need to be doing incentives is in doing incentives for businesses to come here to bring good paying jobs. I've always said that. How can we give incentives for, for people with, for good paying jobs? That's where I would really want to see it, incentives given, where the company would have to stay here five years, can't move. Because some people, if you give them incentives, they'll leave in about two, three years. But I think that we should have some kind of incentive for businesses to come here in our town so our people that live here could have, especially our young people wouldn't have to leave home to get a good paying job. So I'm going to support giving him this credit. And let's move on and sunset.
I didn't think we were going to support giving away bunted millionaires, Shane. That's what you said before.
I know, I said that, I said that, but he doesn't have a total $31 million in his pocket. He got to pay a mortgage, or somebody has to pay a mortgage.
The work session is, is on the sunsetting the Horizon, but there's been discussion about the Ross and the letter that was received. And I know the council understands this, but under the Horizon tax credit, section G2, after reviewed by the finance department, the application will be submitted for approval by the county executive and the county council by resolution. The decision whether to grant the Ross, the Horizon tax credit is not solely the county councils, it's the county executive. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is at the time that they came before you, before, the county executive had not provided the council with an opinion as to what her position was.
That's right.
And it seems to me that the council needs to ask the county executive what her position is. Because if the county executive's position is she's not going to approve it, it makes no difference what the county council does, is my only point. I, I note in the letter that was received that they make reference to, quote, however in the letter, Mr. Luthman noted the county executive has no objection to this request. I may not have read it correctly. The county council received a, a letter from Mr. Luthman. And the way I interpret it was the county executive had no objection to the county council holding a hearing, had nothing to do with whether the county executive was in favor or not in favor of, of granting the tax credit. So the county council acted, but if you want to revisit it, it seems to me that it's appropriate for the county executive to weigh in either concurrently or before, because it makes no difference what you do if she decides that she's not going to agree to it.
Okay. Well, that's not a problem.
I don't know if it's a matter of semantics as to whether or not, what degree she did agree, she didn't object, which is one point.
Well, I, I interpreted it, and maybe I'm not correct, I interpreted that she did not object to holding a hearing, not on whether it should be granted or not. That's the way I read Mr. Luthman's letter.
You're suggesting that if there's a consensus on the council to reintroduce a resolution to grant the tax exemption, we need to put the, put the resolution together, but it is something we will have to have cooperation with the executive in order to bring it back to the table.
The executive is 50% of this process. She has to approve it. So you can hold the hearing, but if she's not going to approve it, it makes no difference what you do.
She could also approve it after the fact as well.
She, she could.
So, but there is a consensus to reintroduce it, reintroduce the legislation?
Yeah.
I'm understanding.
And just for clarification, it would have to come back as a new business item.
Right, a new.
Bring back the formal.
No, I get it. I get it. Yeah, I get it. We've, we've done that before.
Think about this, we just give away $2 million more than what we knew we were going to have to say. And of course, we know what Josh has said about the disparity grant, myself and other people. Are we ready to give away more tax dollars?
Well, I've not had a chance to speak yet.
I've not done it.
When, when he's done.
I'm done. I'm never done, but.
So, so we're talking about the Horizon program, I guess, first, whether we're going to let it sunset or not. Totally support letting it sunset. As far as the Ross building and giving this tax break, you know, we've talked about for the last four hours, three hours, the money that's constantly going out, going out, going out. And I, I'm not in favor of, of handing out more subsidies, especially where we're at today financially with the money that we're, we keep spending.
Well, it's not a matter of whether you agree with the philosophy or not, it's what was right or wrong in his application process and the county's responsibility.
My understanding, from what I read, he didn't do what he was supposed to do.
I understand, but that is the topic. It has nothing to do with whether you're in favor of giving tax breaks or not, specifically whether or not he, he should, we should grant the tax.
I don't think we should give a tax break.
Right.
In a, in a situation like this now.
Yeah. And again, that is the differences of opinion here. I mean, I personally feel that the county was more than responsible for a lot of the issues and the concerns that happened, and more than responsible for the fact that Mr. Simpson may not have filled out the application in a timely manner, especially considering the fact that when he went to fill out the application, the county did not even have the application. He took the city's application, changed the name to the county, and sent it to the finance director because we didn't have an application.
John, he's a developer. He's a developer. I'm sure he's got attorneys on payroll. How can something this significant get missed? And if the county was liable or the county didn't do their job, how come there weren't attorneys in the executive's office saying, hey, you all have got this program, what do we need to do to ensure that we get it? Where, where did the ball get dropped here?
I think where the ball got dropped was that the county didn't establish any guidelines as were required by legislation. They were required to establish guidelines, did not happen.
If we go to court, we're losing every day that ends in Y.
How do you know that?
I mean, I mean, clearly that we've been failing, we have, we have shown failure on multiple ways for how the county approached this. Now, that may be because, yes, we had timing, there was a questions of, you know, when would their project be done, when would there be a new, there's, I'm sure that you could come up with a lot, but, you know, on the back of this letter that we have from their attorney's office, I mean, it says specifically that the total assessment for the Ross building for that project, 1.9, basically 1.9 million dollars is what it was prior. And that, and guess what? Had they not, had we not had the Horizon program, what would it be today? 1.9 million. We would have still been at that same accessible tax rate base going forward. Instead, what, what did they get out of it? Now it's $31 million. So from, as soon as we get through the Horizon program, which our program's not a 20 year program, it was a 10 year program, I think is what we, we ended up with, as soon as we got to that point, well, guess what? Then we get, as the county, what we get out of the deal is we get to then be charging tax, we get to charge them tax rate for, at a $31 million rate, not at a 1.9 million. So this, it, it, there's a reason why these projects are supposed to be helpful. It's a, you know, it's helpful to both parties that are trying to make it happen. If you don't have, if you don't have things like this in place or other ways to be helpful, you're going to get what you get currently at the old mill, or at the old mall project, nothing.
So.
Josh, how about all the places it's been built otherwise in the county? I mean, dozens of developments, you know, Ocean City Road out there, Bigland Park Drive, you know, that's being built.
Again, it's the application process, Joe, it's not the validity of a program in general.
I'm just arguing with Josh here.
Okay. You said you were done, Joe. James, do you have a comment?
Everybody else made a comment, and I didn't know we were going to talk about the Ross building. But, you know, the reason why I voted no wasn't because I was against the tax break. It was more or less because I was told he was 180 days late past the 90 day deadline. And as a builder, as somebody that would have to go through a permit process, if I was 180 days late, I would be told to go back to the drawing board. I don't know what kind of message that's going to send to the community if we, I did, I, listen, you guys smoked me out on this one, but I don't know what kind of message just is going to send to the community if we approve something like this, which I feel terrible for the guy because they missed it by 180 days, actually six months if you include the 90 days ahead of that. So they missed the deadline. And, you know, if I was building a $31 million building, and I, I'm not, and I don't have that pocketbook that can do that, I think I would have somebody on the payroll to make sure that we don't miss a deadline. And it's in the legislation that he has to come to the county for this application. And from what I hear from Pam, nobody contacted her. And I don't, you know, like if you don't contact the county for this application, then I mean, I don't know what else we can do.
Where's the obligation on the behalf of the county?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, here's the irony. Here's the irony. If he hadn't filled out the application, James, he would still be getting his tax break. That the county was paying him, he would still be getting the full benefits, but because he turned in his application, now he's being punished for it.
Yep.
He was getting the tax break.
The Horizon.
He wasn't getting the. It was labeled, it was labeled, it was labeled as the enterprise.
He was getting the enterprise tax break.
He didn't qualify for it, and he never applied for the enterprise.
But he was, he's not getting the full tax break, John, no.
I get it.
No.
But irony of it is because the county, the county's misstep, I think, was so egregious that we were paying the guy, giving the guy his tax break, and he'd be probably getting it for the next 20 years if he hadn't.
I, I totally.
I don't like getting personal on this, but a few years ago, I had an issue with a piece of timber land that I owned, okay? I was supposed to be in the timber program, the state forest program, and get a tax break. I missed it. I finally went over to 60 foot road and I said, hey, where's this at? You know? Well, they looked through their file, oh yeah, you're supposed to get this. The state didn't send me a letter and say, hey, you're supposed to get this tax break. I had to go looking for it. They never came looking for me to give me a tax break.
Doesn't mean they shouldn't have.
They don't do that.
Well, this, this legislation says that we were to establish the guidelines and we didn't do it.
So I think at this point.
Yeah.
We need to entertain going into a closed session and ask Mr. Benson his legal opinion on where we stand on this.
I don't, I don't want to acknowledge that, that's going to be too much of a disruption to the rest of this meeting. I think, I think we, I appreciate it, Shane, but I think we have a consensus, we have a consensus here to reintroduce a piece of legislation. We can certainly put that together and then see where that lands in, in collaboration with the executive branch.
I agree. And then to sunset the Horizon.
And, and so what about as far as the basic work session on the Horizon? It looks like we're all in agreement on that as well. Okay.
But I do think, I do, Mr. President, I do think one way or another, I, I don't know how, if the, I don't know how we continue to advance how housing and these, this bigger issue in Wycomico County and, but, you know, this seems to be ripe for a work group. And maybe there's, I mean, I know there was a, a work group that was doing more of a financial analysis of things, but one way or another, you know, I, I think we should, I, I think the intent of Horizon was generally good, and that could be beneficial for certain other areas of the county. But as a whole, you know, we still have issues of housing or other kind of things like that. And I don't know if that's something that another group could take on in the county, but I think the more that we could have a better plan going forward, I think that's a good thing for the county, but.
Josh, I keep hearing you say affordable housing and other people say affordable housing, but you said you personally toured the Ross and it looked like dorm rooms, right?
It did, yeah, it basically is, at least for the, I only go to one tower.
So I guess what my point is, if we're going to talk about affordable housing, I don't know how that keeps getting wrapped up into the Ross building.
Yeah, I'm keeping them completely separate. I'm, I'm not saying you want a Ross building in Hebron or something like that, that's not going to fit their, it's not going to fit the comprehensive plan, let alone anything else. But maybe there are other things that we can do to help make sure that the municipalities or the areas that want to grow, that they can grow, and that we can be supportive.
What the county better start worrying about is bringing industry and big business here.
Yeah.
Because we can put up all the housing that we want. The government's not going to be able to foot the bill.
We are now.
Well, at some point, the, the well's going to go dry.
But at the same time, we have people that are, that won't come, we have people that won't bring their businesses to Wycomico County because our schools aren't great and there's no place to live.
And they expect the county to be business friendly.
Yes, which we're currently not.
Let's move on if we could. Appreciate everybody's input on this. The next, the next item on the agenda is the letter of opposition to HR 3372 and HR 2948, which is increasing the weight of, thank you, gentlemen, increasing the weight of heavy trucks from 80,000 pounds to 91,000 pounds. Jeff, do you want to take the lead on this? I'd like to thank Jeff because Jeff actually followed up on the, on the inquiry and has stayed right with it between Jeff and Mrs. Hurley. They've stayed right on this topic.
Yes, so there's, there's actually two house bills. House Bill 3372 would increase the gross weight limit of trucks from 80,000 to 91,000 pounds for up to 10 years on interstate highways. And I, I think that as a result, we all know about the electric vehicles that are increasing in our society and their increased weight. I think not too far down the line, we're going to see electric trucks. Extra weight is going to cause more, more stress on our roads and infrastructure. The Transportation Trust Fund in the state is not where we would like it to be and doesn't, we're not seeing any plans to replenish it. So are we possibly increasing the damage on our infrastructure? There's a question about accidents, the number and severity of accidents. I think back in the pandemic, the weight limit was temporarily increased to 91,000. And I really couldn't find any data to show that there was an increase in the number of accidents, but the severity of the accidents, just because of the physics of a heavy vehicle, the severity increased. So there, there's a whole, whole bunch of, I think at this point, there's more questions than answers on House Bill 3372. The other one's House Bill 2948, and that's to increase the weight limit to 91,000 pounds on the vehicles carrying cars, automobile carriers. And that, that appears to be directly related to the EV industry because let's say your car carrier holds 10 cars, well, in order to meet the current weight limit, they might only be able to hold eight cars, which means more trips. More trips could nationwide increase the possibility of more accidents. The question on both of these bills is what about the states that are contiguous to Maryland? You know, the state could implement these increased weight limits. Well, what about Pennsylvania, Virginia, Delaware, and West Virginia? If they don't increase their weight limits, what do, what do the trucks in Maryland do? Stop at the state line and unload two or three cars? You know, there, again, there's a lot more questions than answers, but.
What if they unloaded those two or three cars in Shane Baker's driveway? You okay with that, Shane?
Yeah.
I'm all right with it. I think you've read the information in the brief book. Is everyone okay with sending a letter of opposition on these two bills?
Mm-hmm. It's federal bills, too.
Excuse me?
It's federal, not state, just making sure that's.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. So we're all good.
Yep.
You know, it's consensus, consensus to do such.
And Worcester County did the same thing. Worcester County sent a letter of opposition to, for, for much of the same reasons.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Sure.
Attain motion to adjourn so we can go. I retain motion to adjourn so we can go to adjourn from the Wycomico County Council so we can convene as the Wycom County Urban Services Commission. Move. Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're now convened as the Urban Services Commission. The first item on the open work session agenda is the Village Downriver condominium sewer service expansion. And as I see here, we have Brian Wilkins is here, and Spencer Cropper is here, and I'm not sure who else may be here, but if you want to come to the front desk here, feel free. Thank you very much. I know we have some other individuals that are here. Well, what I'm trying to do, um, you know, let's get... You know, I think we have representation from the homeowners group as well, which is very good. We really appreciate you all being here today because, believe me, I've been in homeowners' association, I've been president of homeowners' association, and to take over the obligation that you all have done is phenomenal. It's very... It's unbelievable, actually, and you've done a very responsible job over many, many years. And as I understand, part of the agreement suggests that the homeowners' association does have to be a party to any type of decision that we may make from here on forward, but that's how we understand it, at least on the basic forefront. If you could state your name and your association, starting from my left, if you could. Thank you.
My name is Mark Albrecht. I'm the treasurer, past president of the Village Downriver.
That's good. Yes.
Good afternoon. Spencer Cropper, attorney for Terraferma LLC, the applicant of Ayers Jenkins, Courtney and Almond. And here to my left is Mr. Steve Puzey.
Yeah. Appreciate you all. Appreciate all y'all being here. Thank you for taking the time and having to wait. So, I guess, Mr. Cropper, I'll let you have the floor if you'd like to open up.
Sure. And again, for the record, Spencer Cropper, we made this application back in September. My apologies for the... For how luminous it was, but it was my hope to provide the commission with as much information as possible leading into the hearing today. To... Terraferma LLC has an interest in the excess capacity of the sewer plant that it initially built back in...
2010.
2010, and that was built as part of the process for the development of the Village Downriver development, which I'm sure everyone here is, at least in some capacity, aware of. And as a result of the... Of that, I'll call the system being built, there was a... The parties, and at that time, the parties being Terraferma LLC, as well as the county and the Urban Service Commission, entered into a shared facility agreement regarding the shared sewage disposal facility. In that agreement, there is language on... In paragraph 10 regarding the excess capacity, which it was contemplated back at that time, that there would be more capacity available. The plant could run on more capacity than would serve that particular residential development, and the... And that my client here would have, has an interest, a prorated interest and consent interest in that excess capacity. As the development was built out and more and more units were sold off, eventually... Oh, and before I get to that point, there was also a deed of easement, a deed of shared sewage disposal facility easement that was also entered into and recorded on or about the same time as the shared facility agreement. Later on, after the... Again, after the development was built out, the system itself was turned over to the Village Downriver. However, in that amended shared facility agreement, which was entered into in 2018, my client still at that time, and today retained his interest, both consent interest and prorated interest in the excess capacity whenever that excess capacity would become available, and in particular, to future developers developing a project somewhere within the vicinity that could certainly be served by the same plant. A meeting with my client, today, that excess capacity has... Has not been made available to a developer, or I believe, in general. And as I've thought about this, what comes first, the chicken or the egg, the developer or the ability to utilize what is, what we've determined to be 68 housing units available of excess capacity that the sewer plant could utilize? So, what comes first, the ability for a developer to access those EDUs or the EDUs themselves? We believe that this is a step in wanting to make those EDUs available for a developer when that time is to come, and we believe, at least, the first step in doing so was to expand the service district for that system, which at this time just covers Village Downriver Development. And that is the reason why we're here and hoping that we can come to some sort of resolution as to that, admittedly, in a bit of uncharted territories with this, and hoping that we can provide, for any questions that the commission has, that we can provide now or in the very near future, any and all documentation that we haven't already provided or any other information that might aid the commission in coming to a decision.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cropper. Mr. Albrecht, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Well, absolutely. First off, we have... The village has no problem with Mr. Puzey's prorated reimbursement for any future development outside the community. What we do have a problem with is that the proposal has stated that there's... They want to have a 68-unit ability to develop outside of our community, and from the numbers that I have been putting together, I find that it exceeds the maximum capacity of our waste plant.
Okay.
Okay? According to the GMB study that was done way back in 2008 for the development of the plant, it specifically states that it is for 48... 49 units, which is where our community is. And then it also states that future units to be built is eight outside of the community.
Hang on, could you repeat that? Because I thought you said 48, and then you said eight.
No, there are 49 units within the community.
Yes.
That this plan is for, and then for future development outside of the community.
Right.
There is only eight available units.
Okay.
That's what the plan is.
So, you're saying that the facility, as it stands right now, the maximum is...
It's 57.
57, okay.
Now, they also state in that that the average daily flow uses is for 57 units, and that is 17,100 gallons per day. And our maximum for the same amount of units, 57, is 34,200 units per day, gallons per According to our SRF and the MDE, the community is permitted for 15,000 gallons per day. If you... And then one other thing, so we have all our numbers. I went on to the county waste plant site and the MDE, Maryland Waste Plant, for disposals systems that have flows greater than 5,000 gallons per day, which is what we are. They determine that residential flow... This is in Section 5B. Residential flows are to be computed based upon a maximum daily flow of 150 gallons per bedroom. Okay? Now, I went back, and I... And if we took the 15,000 gallons that we're allowed to use maximum in a day's time and divided that by 150 to see how many bedrooms that would accommodate, that would accommodate 98 bedrooms. Well, if you divide 98 by 49, that means every house in there can be no more than two bedrooms. We far exceed that already. Currently, our homes have... We have 31 homes in the community out of possible 47, because we have a couple lots that are combined. Of those 31 homes, nine of them have more than... Have four or more bedrooms, which is a total of 36 bedrooms or more. And we have 22 of those houses that have three bedrooms, which is 66 bedrooms total, which, if you add those two together, that's 102 bedrooms. We're already over the 98. Okay? So, we're already approaching max. And then if you add the... And then we have 16 empty lots. If you add those 16 homes into that and figure them out as three-bedroom homes, that's another 48. So, that puts us at 150 bedrooms for our... For the community itself, not even counting outside development yet. So, with that 150 unit, I mean, bedrooms that we have, or possibly have in the future, at 150 gallons per minute or day, that is a total of 22,500 gallons per day that our community will be using out of the possible maximum of 34,200. That leaves 11,700 to be used for an outside development. Now, if you figure out 68 homes moving into an outside development at two bedrooms, that's 136 bedrooms, that's already 20,400 square... I mean, gallons per day. That's well over 11,700. If you have 68 homes and they're at three bedrooms each, you're talking about 204 bedrooms. That's 30,600 gallons per day. We are... That is way, way over our maximum usage. So, after you're looking at that, then you take the... X the difference between what we currently would be using if we were fully developed out of 22,500, subtract that, or take 11,700 away from that. I mean, no, I'm sorry. If we take the 11,700, which is the difference between what we're currently using in the max, and divide that by 150, that means we can only accommodate 78 more bedrooms. Well, the 68 times two, that means there's only room for 39 homes. If you take the ones with three bedrooms, there's only room for 26 homes. That is well below the 68 units they're asking for. That doesn't even come close.
I have one question. You said there's nine lots still vacant?
No, there's 16.
16 lots? I'm not familiar with your covenants. Are there any restrictions that require the houses to be a certain square footage?
2,000 square feet.
How many?
2,000 square feet. It doesn't stipulate bedroom size.
Because I was wondering whether or not the houses that were being built would have to be a minimum of three-bedroom or whether they could be two-bedroom, just curious.
They could be, but I mean... But I mean... But as long as it meets to 2,000 square feet.
Right, just clarification. Sorry, I interrupted. You go ahead if you have.
But historically, as we have been building out in the community, most of the homes in there are well over 2,000. There are a few that are close, but most of them are well over, and they're all a minimum of three bedrooms, and some even more. All right. Now, because of that, we have another concern because of the access to our waste plant from an outside area. According to the map that is also part of the GMB facilities presentation, I don't know if this is probably hard to see, but all of this down in this area here...
Here, I hold it up.
The most of that area that is dedicated to the waste plant is already... We got nine drain fields. We have 36 elevated sand mounds also used for that, and that incorporates all of this area in here that you see down the bottom. Waste plant's way over here. Means the only way they can access that is coming down the road to the community, which means that that's going to be pretty much going to be difficult for people to get in and out of our community. So, that's the only trunk line that they can get into, as far as I know, and I'm not an engineer, so I can't really say that's it. So, that's the only way they can get into there. So, that's another issue that we have with this proposal. And as they were saying with our SRF, our SRF does give us... There are only three people who signed off on the SRF. One's the council, one's the commission, and one's the VDR. All three of those, according to the SRF.
You say SRF, the public...
That's the...
The public understands the acronym, if you could.
That's the shared facility agreement.
Thank you.
For the waste plant.
Thank you.
Section 10, which is the service area excess capacity, it says, "The parties covenant and agree that the sewage system is for the exclusive use of units in the Village Downriver condominium, and no party shall, without the prior written consent of all the parties to this agreement, permit additions to or expansion of the area served by the sewer system to include any property outside of the Village Downriver condominium." And this is the last shared agreement that was signed back in March 12th, 2018.
Yes.
So, my other last comment would be that if there was a way that we did not maximum use all the maximum amount of affluent flow, and the proposal for outside development does come to fruition, I don't think anything should happen before the... All of the units within the Village Downriver have been built out because they come first. Outside units come second because this plant was initially built for the unit, the Village Downriver. And if we take... When we allow them to build out and start building homes and take away from those potential homes in the community, that is not what it's all about. So, I don't... Totally disagree with the proposal. I just disagree with it being occurring at this time, and also with a 68 unit that is asking for.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. Mr. Wilber, did you have any comments?
Sorry for being outside. We've been meeting with Mr. Karpinski. The application's been made, and it says that, you know, this... The Urban Services Commission is the right body to hear the application. And I... To me, it needs research, we'll say, so that you have all the facts, both, you know, from Terraferma, from Village Downriver, and from, say, County Public Works. Well, MDE and probably Maryland Department of Planning, they would also be into it for a waste... A water and sewer plan amendment. So, I think the purpose of today is to get... Give you all a briefing as to what the request is. You know, you've heard, obviously, from VDR, and let's get more research done and come back to you again. I think that's the appropriate way to go forward.
Mr. Cropper?
Yes, if I could, I'd like to clarify a couple of points. First, I agree with Paul that certainly more research is needed. Our numbers certainly differ from... My apologies.
Albrecht. Is it Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht. All the more reason to get a better determination, a current determination as to what those numbers actually are. One point of clarification, Terraferma is not intending to develop another property. Terraferma merely wants to make... To expand the service area to make the excess capacity available to developers when that time should come. So, I just... If there's any miscommunication on that by anybody in the room, Terraferma is not... There's not a development that is proceeding or hoping to be preceded by Terraferma as a result of this request. It's just making those EDUs available. And just another point of clarification, the shared facilities agreement, which was the original agreement, the signatories were Terraferma, the county, and the Urban Service Commission, and the amended... And the amended shared facilities agreement, it was the... it was the, it was Village Downriver as well as the county and the Urban Service, uh, Commission. So, I, I just, just a point of, of clarification as to the involvement of Village Downriver came, as far as these agreements, came later, once the plant was turned over. But also in both agreements, my client retains his interest in the excess capacity. Just hoping that, if there's any questions on any of that, just hoping that might clear it up. But again, I, I would very much agree with Paul that this will, will require farther analysis, research, and to, to be able to hone in on what we need to, to provide farther updates to the commission.
And I think, you know, as a commission, we certainly would want, I mean, Mr. Pusey and, and Mr. Kropper, we would certainly want to not uphold progress or anything to that effect, and we would love to see an expanded project develop, however it might be. What I'm concerned about at this point in time, however, is it seems like it's so far apart from where each of you are, and I think these are a lot of very poignant issues here that have been expressed on the part of Mr. Abish, Mr. Abish, that I believe that, that you may have to reevaluate where you are with, with the information that's been supplied today to maybe reconfigure exactly what your options are, not, not if you're planning to build, but my God, if you're going to try to send, if, if you were to try to sell these development rights to someone else, and they have a conversation anywhere near what Mr. Abish has, has shared with us today, you're going to be, have a lot of concerns, I think. Uh, that's just my, from, from the initial perspective of what I'm hearing today. But you had a, Mr. Pusey, you had a comment?
I, I do. Um, the, the number that we have, the sixty-eight units, comes from George Mazzin Bureau. When I entered into this agreement with Wycomico County, the reason why I entered into it, we built this system at the bequest of Wycomico County. They wanted the extra capacity. We built it for them.
Correct.
For their future use. I didn't need to build it for the Village Downriver. So I went to.
Well, you didn't need to build the unit, but not the expansion.
Not the expansion, but it was all built in at my, my cost. I financed it, I built it, but for the benefit of Wycomico County, the future. And when I went to George Mazzin Bureau, I said, "I need to know what the extra capacity of this system is before I enter into this agreement." And frankly, the only reason I entered into the agreement, because I knew that George Mazzin Bureau said, "You have a maximum capacity of around ninety-two units," based on, as it was built, as it was being built. And I, that's what I used, George GND's numbers. And then ultimately, the, um, uh, the extra capacity is determined by the, um, actual usage, empirical data of what's used. And Mr. Abish was wrong, there's not, it's seventy-five gallons per bedroom, per unit. And that's what they base it on. So originally, from whatever he's talking, whatever document he has over there, this thing was supposed to be built for fifty-seven units with expandability beyond that. So, um, I went to them and I said, "Tell me now, before I enter this agreement," because the only reason I'm going to enter this agreement is I know that I get the recoupment cost for building this extra capacity, the recoupment cost comes back to me. So I need to know what the future, uh, uh, capacity of this system is. And they gave me that information. They said, "Sure, it's an easy question." And I, this is included in your, um, exhibits with your, along with the agreement. And they concluded that the, um, using, utilizing all of the existing, um, sand mounds that were, the normal topography of the land that was there was above ten elevation. All, using all of those that were on, onsite, and utilizing, um, we could construct, um, up to thirty-five thousand gallons per day at maximum capacity. The average capacity on a normal day is seventeen thousand. But the state of Maryland requires you to have a peak, a peak number of capacity that you can, that you have to be able to store and be able to process. So that takes up to thirty-four thousand. But they later determined that, um, we could utilize these additional mounds for extra capacity, and we could increase the average daily flow up to forty-six thousand gallons per day, as opposed to the thirty-four that was permitted. And again, the permitting is one thing, the actual maximum capacity is another, because all you have to do is, is apply for a new permit to get the extra capacity. So, so with this, the forty-six thousand then becomes what they said would be ninety, ninety-two homes, which is about fifty more than what's there. So, but then, uh, you use empirical data, the, the master water and sewer plan says that all extra capacity is now based on actual flows. So instead of the three hundred gallons per day average flow that was projected, the actual flows that are, um, that are being utilized today out there is, only comes to about two hundred gallons per day. So if you go back and use the two hundred gallons per day as the empirical data, and you extrapolate that out over the, over the forty-six thousand gallons per day maximum flow, it equates to the, the, um, the sixty-eight additional units that I'm asking for. That's all the engineer's calculations, not mine. So Mr. Abish has, um, is not a party to this agreement. But, um, again, but, but the, um, so I don't, I don't understand anything about his numbers. They, I mean, it says, makes no, absolutely no sense to me. All I know is what the engineer told me, and that's what I'm basing my application on.
What the engineer told you, is that, I see a lot of these documents from two thousand eight. Is this, you say, recently he told you?
This, when I, in two thousand eight, when we built the system, when we agreed to build the system and, and provide for the extra capacity, and it's, and it, when I built it, in other words, we built it to support the extra capacity as maximum we could get that the county wanted for their future use. So I acquired to them, I said, "Well, this system was the maximum capacity we can get out of it." And that's when they sent me this and said, "Here's what we have. The site and the unit will support this extra capacity, totaling ninety-two units overall."
And that capacity from two thousand eight or whenever?
Yeah, but that doesn't change.
Is that, that stays the same?
Exactly. Uh, that, nothing changes there, so.
And more, I think also going to Mr. Hastings' point, Steve, wasn't there a time when, more recently, that you had gotten some, some data on the usage of some of the units?
Yeah, I had in two thousand eighteen, when we turned the system back over, to, over, over the operations of the system back over to the homeowner association. The, uh, the operator at the time, Bio Systems, provided me with the daily usage for about a three-week period. And the empirical data indicates that the system's only using two hundred gallons per day, per home, and not the, uh, uh, original thought of it using three hundred and fifty gallons or three hundred gallons per day. So you base, you base your flows on empirical data, and that's what I did, and that's what this, um, the master plan calls for. So if you use that two hundred gallons per day instead of three hundred gallons per day, you come up to that extra sixty-eight units that I'm saying is available. And I think that GMB's numbers would, would verify that. We actually built, well, they, well, they bumped, it's important, we bumped it up to forty-six thousand gallons, they did. We had to expand the storage pond to support that forty-six thousand gallons, and the system will accept the flow. So we did everything we could to make sure that the system would qualify for this extra capacity.
In section ten of the active, um, agreement, the active agreement, not the whole one, uh, states that all parties, um, that no party shall, without the prior written consent of all the parties of this agreement, permit additions to or expansion of the area served by the sewage system. Those, that reference to all parties, is that not Wycomico County, the Wycomico County Urban Service Commission, and the Village Downriver Condominium Association?
It's not the Village Downriver Condominium.
Wasn't that transferred, because once you had a certain amount of build-out, you transferred it to the VDR, right?
They are a party to that agreement, yes, and that is, and those, that language is certainly in the amended shared facilities agreement. You, you're correct on that. But I will, I just, a point of clarification there, too, that, that amended shared facilities agreement does not make obsolete the original shared facilities agreement as well, in which Terra Firma is a party to that agreement. And there is, um, I just, I just, I wanted to make sure that, to, to the extent that there is possibly a thought that Terra Firma could not be a part, might not be a party, because the name isn't in the amended shared facilities agreement, it is in the original, and his rights are preserved from the original.
Mr. Wilber? That's your question and not mine.
Another, another aspect of it is that this is a condominium down there, and there's a condominium declaration, and the wastewater plant system is a common element of the condominium. And in two thousand eighteen, it was turned over to the Village Downriver.
So in order to have any say in what the VDR does.
I'll say, yeah, I'm fine. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
In order for Terra Firma to have any say in what goes on within the VDR, including specifically this shared facility agreement, he has to be an owner within that condominium. He is not. Now, we don't debate the fact that he does get some reimbursement that has never changed from the original to the new one, that has never been in question at all. Whatever is developed outside, whatever monies that would be generated, and he would get his prorated share. We don't care, that's, that's fine. But, but, um, according to, and I, I don't know why he's using seventy-five, unless this from two thousand fifteen, which is currently on your site, the waste plant. So if this is not up to date, I'm not sure why not. That's the one that says the home, all residential flows are using one fifty gallon, one hundred and fifty gallons per day, not the seventy-five.
I have one other question. Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, um, you mentioned, uh, sand mounds and septic tanks, drain fields. Do you have reserve areas for all those?
There are.
There are, um.
Supposed to be ten thousand square foot reserve area for everyone? Or that's, that's what the state requires for a home?
There's double the amount. The actual bleaching fields that we're using, uh, and proposed out there are the basic geop-, uh, topography that exists. Then you have to have reserve sand mounds for future, in case there's a failure in one of the systems, which is double, and it takes up twenty-two acres. So yes, there, there's reserve sand mounds. The ownership of this, okay, Spencer's going to speak to that, and the, um, consenting, the consenting rights go back to the original shared facility agreement. They never changed from the original shared facility agreement. And, um, the, the homeowners do not have consent rights in this. This is between me and the county, always was and always will. And, uh, I think Spencer will speak to that for me.
The, the other thing, since two thousand eighteen, what we've seen in the county is a big change in the laws as far as putting in septic systems. Do you think that since two thousand eighteen to now, that there's been any big changes that will affect the numbers you have used, either one of the two of you, as far as what MDE requires?
Or tables.
Yeah.
That's available technology.
I mean, that's something that I think, when I mentioned to Paul about MDE being involved, I think that's where you should be before you go anywhere else, to see what they're going to allow to be done.
I don't disagree with that.
I think that's, it's all, these are all very relevant topics to be, to be pursued and to, to get farther information on. Certainly, the, the hope in making this application now was to start this process. And envisioning, frankly, that it would take some time to, and which I believe was also in the spirit of, of code section ninety-seven six, and, and taking time to compile the information needed. And this was just, this was the first step in, in, in what is probably a longer, much longer process in getting there. But all very relevant, uh, points and items that, that would need to be looked into farther, and certainly including any difference in numbers that we have versus Mr. Abish, and, or whatever may, may come up somewhere in between, perhaps.
I have two more comments, if you don't mind. The sand mound capacity, that's for failure of current systems. It's not for the, uh, not for it to be used to increase the maximum flow. Okay, because once you use that towards maximum flow, then you have nothing left over in case you have failure.
Backup.
Right. And, um, forgot, second point would be, um, oh, if the proposal is approved with whatever the unit count will end up being, um, historically, and everybody probably knows this also, once you have an approval out there and people know you can develop it, it's going to be developed. Okay? That means it could be developed well before we are fully built out, which still says in my book that they're taking away, um, from the current homeowners the ability to use the waste plant for their use first. I think the waste plant, I don't care how or whatever the reason was for its purpose, its purpose was generally for the Village Downriver, for forty-nine units. So those forty-nine units have got to be met first before we move on to something else. That's how the village feels.
And if I could, the, Terra Firma has no intent of taking any, any of that away from the Village Downriver. And I think in, in farther research on this, the number could be determined as to what would need to be otherwise set aside for the remaining units left in the Village Downriver. So I, to the extent that anyone, the Village Downriver feels as if we'd be trying to take away any of that for farther excess capacity, that's, that's not the intent behind this, but merely to use what is otherwise available once, for lack of better words, the dust settles on, on the numbers, to be able to be utilized by a developer, you know, in the future. Just one more note on the, um, Mr., the Terra Firma's interest. It was even actually, and there's an opinion that's in, in the packet from the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals, that, that references Terra Firma retaining that, that prorated interest that we've been discussing. And that, that never went away, nor, at least in my opinion, relinquished his ability to, to act on that to the extent that the commission allows it, based upon the amended shared facilities agreement thereafter. And just to, if, to the extent that that helps, again, I know I gave everybody a fairly voluminous packet, including that opinion, but there is that language in there as well.
Consent rights stay with, the consent rights are between Wycomico County and Terra Firma. The consent rights do not stay with the Village Downriver. They are not a party to that. And that ruling says that the SFA, I'm sorry, I just need to get it out. The FS, SFA original is the controlling document. And, um, so, um, the, so that, that's important for you to know, that they, I mean, I, I, I'm sure if I were he, I would be here myself today, looking out for the homeowners. The homeowners are taken care of. They're not, that, there's no usage. This extra capacity needs to be recognized.
Steve?
This is important, I'm going to say. In order for, to ever be utilized, developers have to know that it's available. So as it is now, it, it should have been recognized years ago, and it wasn't. So it needs to be recognized so developers can know that it's available, so they can, and know that, okay, so, um, but I think you'll find that these numbers from George Mazzin Bureau are accurate. And, um, I think that Mr. Abish has some concerns, but they're not.
We're going to have another work session on this? Um, Mr. Wilber, um, yeah, we're going to have to, I think we appreciate having gotten the information from both sides. There appears to obviously be an impasse here. In order for us, I guess, maybe to even come to any type of resolution, certainly going to need a whole lot more information. But there's a couple, a little concern that I really have, what I'm seeing develop here. You've got two exact opposite opinions of what's occurring. Where's this going to land? And the last thing I think anybody wants to see is this turn into a massive lawsuit, nor do I think that the county wants to see us encumbered with the legal bills and trying to sort through the differences between these two parties. So legally, where is that going to leave this commission? And the county as a whole, where you have two parties that aren't in, aren't in agreement? Where, where does the obligation lie to solve this problem here?
I think it's, you could say all three parties, if not all four parties, because we have the county and we have the Urban Service Commission on the county side. You've got TerraFirma, you've got VDR, and the position or the, the duties of the county are one thing. You know, it's, it's about EDUs, but I think we need engineering information, because we've really got a discrepancy that's been described here about what is the plant, you know, how is it, say, these sand mounds, how are they to be used? And then you've got, between these two parties here, if they, if they're, we're hearing, I think, that they see things quite differently, and, yes, we, they should each have attorneys. Obviously, TerraFirma has an attorney. I don't know if Village Down River has one.
I think, I think it would behoove the association to make sure that George Miles and Bureau gets the information that Mr. Albrecht has shared with us.
Right.
So they can reevaluate how their determination of the, the numbers coincide with what he is suggesting today, and let them sort of vet that themselves. I mean, they are the engineers. And as Joe suggested, MDE needs to play a role in this, but we have a, you know, in having established, we have a homeowner association here that I think should be under no obligation whatsoever to be exposed to such legal expenses that could be incurred here. It's, it's, it could be astronomical. So what role are we going to play as a county and as a mediator in all of this without also absorbing those type of exorbitant costs?
I definitely think there could be, unless there's like a common meeting of the minds, or definitely could be costs that have been run up.
Yes, Bob?
I'm sorry. Mr. Wilber, it seems to me, I mean, I'm just looking at this, but the central issue, it seems to me, based on the comments that have been made, is whether the original SFR or the amended SFR controls, because if it's the second, if it's the amended, you can't do this unless the homeowners association agrees. But if I understand correctly, they're saying the second amended, the amended doesn't count, and we have to go back to the original. So there's, before everybody starts spending a whole lot of money, it seems to me the issue is who the, who the parties are that have to agree, because at this point, if the parties have, that have to agree, include the Village Down River Condominium Association, there's no agreement, and there's nothing, there's nothing for the Urban Services District to do.
That's a really good point. That sort of cuts to the chase.
If I could.
Yes.
Hopefully this may shed a little bit of light on this. We don't, for a moment, we're not asserting here today that, that the amended is invalid. The, the point we're trying to make is that the, the, the TerraFirma's interest in the capacity remains from the original shared facilities agreement through the amended. And I also, from what I've been hearing, would be at least hopeful with some communications with the Village Down River. I, I think some of their concerns could, could be alleviated through, through farther communications on this, but perhaps I'm wrong, but I think it's worth taking some time to see if that, if, if that could, could make this process a little easier.
It would just seem to me, if it comes back before the, the Urban Services District, there's going to need to be an opinion from the county attorney's office, that who, as to who the, the parties are that have to be in, in agreement. And if the conclusion is that one of those parties is the Village Down River Condominium Association, there's not agreement.
Are you in, are you in agreement with what Mr. Benson's saying?
Right.
And so you could work towards that?
Right. That's fine.
It's a good start.
But it's like I say, if everybody agrees, then, fine, but if people don't agree.
It does appear as if we're at two opposites right now.
Could end up in court.
But it wouldn't hurt to create that distinction first.
Yeah.
I think, I think one other thing that needs to be determined is that they came up with 75 gallons per day as the controlling, is the factor that is used to determine EDUs, and I have 150. Which one is correct? If we know which one is correct, then we know which way it is going to lean.
That's a good point, too, yeah. Very much.
So as soon as we can determine that, once we know that, then we can kind of meet and come to an agreement on what is going to be available.
Write that down, Mr. Wilber.
Yeah.
If you could also do us a favor and supply your notes to us, as well as to Mr. Cropper, would you mind doing that? Because you have some really great information, and we do appreciate you. Anything else you wanted to add? Not necessary, but if you did.
I have one more question, John.
Joe had a question.
Yeah. I guess the main advice is make sure you, before you spend another dime, I would go to MDE, before anybody does. Okay. The other question was, maybe this doesn't have anything to do with what we're here for today, but does these additional units that they're going to build, are they going to be included in the homeowners association? Are, are you going to have an issue when all that takes place of who takes care of what as far as the, the septic system goes?
They're not part of the homeowners association. My understanding is they're not going to be part of it. What they do is they contribute to the revenue that is generated for the VDR, as well as for TerraFirma.
How do you, how do you enforce that? If they don't?
We send them invoices.
Yeah, but if they don't say?
I don't know how that would be enforced.
All right. All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. Very much a thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilber. And thank you, Bob. Good seeing you again, Mr. Pusy. Good seeing you.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
John, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It goes right through.
I know.
Yeah. Entertaining motion to adjourn from Wycomico County Urban Services Commission reconvenance Wycomico County Council?
To move.
Second?
Second.
All is a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We now adjourn from the legislative session of Wycomico County Council and move into